Yeah, Lexi's here by the hour.
Well, that's okay.
So are you on?
Yep.
I'm gonna call the Bath Township Planning Commission meeting to order. It's a couple of minutes after six and the date is April the ninth.
April twenty-three.
Oh, is it? Oh, I'm on the minutes, sorry, not the agenda. Sorry, folks, my mistake. What happened to my agenda?
I'll find out. Here is mine.
Oh, thanks, George. Any comment? I mean, oh, we want to make an amendment to the agenda, don't we? Does somebody want to make that a change? You go ahead.
Kate, you want to do it or you want me to?
Uh, can we make an amendment to move item number eight A, new business Bath Township Museum presentation, up to, uh, seven C?
Yep, and make seven C.
Seven C, yeah.
And make CD.
And make CD.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion to the second. Is, any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know I'm, I need to leave just before eight, so if you start running late, I'd like to, uh, make a planning commission comment before I leave.
Oh, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Those in favor of the changes to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, hearing done, we'll move forward. Disclosures of conflict of interest, does anyone have any? Any general comment about any factor, items not on the agenda would be preferred because we do have comment for items on the agenda. So if anybody wanted to speak to general public comment? None? Commissioner Washington, thank you for attending. Did you have anything you wanted to say in regards to the county?
No, I, not long.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I noticed you were here and I appreciate you coming. Thank you. Uh, the minutes of April the ninth, does anybody have any significant?
I moved to approve the minutes of April ninth.
Wow, that was quick.
I have one.
Yep.
Uh, it was on, sorry, it was, um, on...
It was just there.
Uh, thirteen B, under Planning Commission member comments. Commissioner Almarigi referenced a person who is a former planning commissioner and is also a former Board of Trustees member, not current.
And you wanted to?
And I wanted to amend that to say former, not current.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Okay. Anybody got anything else they want to edit or change?
I moved to...
Go ahead, Martin.
Again, misspelling my name.
Oh, my God.
In the adjournment.
They put an M again?
Yeah, well, at least they're consistent.
Yeah.
I, I promise you-
It's auto-correct at this point.
No, it is. I promise you it is, because I changed it on our last set and then I had to check and it autocorrected back.
What are, what are the chances of a, of a crainer replacing a Kramer? Like, one of the ten?
I moved to approve the minutes as amended with them two changes.
I'll second that.
All right, sorry about that.
No problem.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone objecting? Okay, let's move on. Communications, Miles, did you have anything for us?
Not at this time.
Okay, old business. Do you want to give a staff report on the ID?
Yeah, so I can intro the project. Let me get down there. All right, um, so for anyone that's unfamiliar with this project, it's been intro'd at the Planning Commission once. Tonight, I think we'll have the public hearing and just, you know, for the sake of process, um, you know, Chair, this is where you'll have to open up the public hearing. John, sorry, you'll have to, um, open, I'm just explaining, you'll have to open up the public hearing whenever that goes and we'll have to close the public hearing.
Right.
Um, so the land use that we're talking about is a multifamily residential land use. Uh, I'll go to the map real quick. So it's on this larger parcel that's within the Somerset complex here. Um, let me get back to the staff report. I'll go to the plans here. So it shows their location. We have some plans posted on our whiteboard, but let me get down to their landscaping sheet. Sorry, it's just a big file. Almost there. Okay, cool. So these take the form, um, I, I think they close, most closely take the form of condos, but I think we're calling them townhomes, but by the state's building code, with the garages in the front, a single story, I think they, they would put them under the definition of condos. Uh, they're going to exist on one parcel. I don't think we're citing these out. Um, they're gonna be for rent, not for ownership, we've established that. Uh, just to make everyone recall where these were at, we, we ran into what we perceived to be some traffic congestion issues by having drives along that main Somerset lane. The developer worked with us and moved some of those to the interior drives, which we appreciate. You can see here, the attempt to do some landscaping and create some buffering between backyards and existing land uses. Speaking of existing land uses, the partnering land use is multifamily residential, which takes the form of apartments to the north and to the, um, east here, and then even a little bit in the south. Then we have a commercial facility, a large township employer, BSNA, here on the very south portion. This is a wetter area to the west of them, and then Webster Road is ultimately here to the west. Um, it's a number of units. We've had our agency reviews all come in at this point, other than one that's wrapping up with the road commission and some work between the engineers at SCUMA, our township engineer, and the developers' engineer are still having a, a couple conversations about things. But we had, just for full disclosure, I guess, we had a internal meeting between their engineering staff and our engineering staff, and it seemed like we're moving in a positive direction. I think there's some good solutions to be made there, but just a couple of things they wanted to see cleaned up on the plans. Um, so at this time, you know, the planning department isn't recommending a vote tonight. We are recommending to conduct a, a public hearing as is required by the state's Planning Enabling Act and kind of getting that process out of the way. That way, when these agency reviews are concluded, we'll be in a better place to take a vote, will have more information, which is the whole point. We want the planning commission to have full information before you guys are putting any kind of voting position. So that's kind of where we stand right now. I can't really talk all the way about what engineering concerns we do or don't have, because some of that's still being figured out.
Yeah.
So that remains to be seen, I think, in just full transparency. One of the main, uh, concerns here is how this site will perform as it's hooked into the public road network. I believe I development is on the agenda Thursday at the road commission to talk to their board about some of that, so we'll kind of, it remains to be seen how that all fares out. So far, it seems, again, similar to the SCUMA stuff, that those conversations are ongoing and seem like they're happening in good faith at this point, so we'll see.
Any more comments? At this point, I'll open the meeting to any public comment in regards to this development. You step up to the podium, identify yourself. Appreciate it very much. No takers at all?
Nobody's here.
Well, commissioners, do you have any comments?
Uh, I just had a general comment. That, you mentioned that wet, wetland in the front, uh, west of the, of the development.
Yeah.
Toward, between the road and the development. Is that a designated wetland or what?
I believe that some of this is a designated wetland, and we've required a review from Eagle, as is typical with our reviews that go to Eagle. We haven't received a review back yet.
Yeah, I stopped and looked at it today and I said, well, it's pretty low, and sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't.
And I think that, and I don't know if you want to speak to this, Sam, on how you guys developed this and it seemed like avoided disturbing a lot of this area.
It, it's not worth getting involved in, it's too wet, there's not...
Yeah. Seemed like a good buffer for the, for between the road and the development, too. I don't have any other questions.
That really helped us meet a lot of their open space requirements here. I mean, they far exceed our minimum requirements because of that. I'll say another thing, um, from the fire perspective, too, that they were helpful working on us, um, or working with us on was, originally, I think, especially this row of buildings, was all one consecutive row, and for fire reasons, to get that a hundred and fifty feet of hose all the way around the building in a timely manner, they worked with us on splitting some of that up, so that was helpful as well.
Looks a lot cleaner now.
Yeah.
Does.
Are there, like, exterior elevation drawings? They weren't in this packet. I didn't know if we had seen them.
Like rendering, do you mean, something?
Yeah.
Oh, like architectural elevations? Yeah, we do have some. I don't, we probably didn't include them in the packet.
Okay.
I think we got those when it was, um, when it came around the first time, prior to Sam taking the project over.
Okay.
I can send, I can email those out. I'll make sure they're in the next packet as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Washington? Thank you.
Wait, Washington Park Lake, and my question is, could you say a little bit more about the traffic study and particularly how it would add to what's, um, expected with Norm Fassner?
Yes, we've had some questions about traffic. So the original traffic study that was done with this site, if, and this is before my time here, so John, let me know if I'm saying anything incorrect. I think this originally came as Somerset two point O is what was called at the time, and it was apartment complexes that were far more units than this, and they were required to do a traffic study as a part of that review, and since this is so fewer units than that, um, I don't think a tr- a traffic study is brought up at this point. I think that if that's something that the planning commission has concerns about, given there has been some changes in the corridor, not necessarily yet, but, you know, a lot to come. If Norm does end up developing next year, that would be something that, you know, I think the developers' engineer, even if it wasn't a full-blown traffic study, even if it was just, you know, a traffic impact analysis, they could probably provide some feedback on.
Hey, Mike, any other comments?
Sir, so this will be serviced by, like, a trash pickup, right? I assume.
Tr- serviced by what?
Trash pickup. There's not, like, dumpster, uh, just, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All the residents will be on their own?
Yep. Well, they won't be on their own, but they'll, they'll have their own individuals.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, is there pathways? Did you guys set up any pathways or parkways or anything like that?
We haven't got those, anything beyond what's inside the site there itself. There'll be sidewalks in front of the units, the people, pedestrians and such. But pathways would be right there, associated just with the complex.
The reason I ask is because they'll be putting a sidewalk in along the road, and I didn't know if you had plans to-
There is one along-
Make some type of trail or-
There's one along Somerset Drive, and we would anticipate connecting right into that.
Okay.
Yeah, so they've, they've got their sidewalks coming in front of the units and then making a cross here, which if there's going to be crossings there, we'll probably, it's a public road, but I'm sure the road commission will recommend that those crossings be striped. One thing that we've been in touch with the road commission on and haven't necessarily communicated to the IDs yet, but will probably come as part of their review and our new sidewalk ordinance, is if the planning commission approves, so this will be on our recommended set of conditions. If the planning commission approves a site plan that doesn't include sidewalks or along the, um, required frontage, because technically, the frontage for this parcel, it's, it's threefold. So the frontage is here, yeah, it's almost four. This is all frontage. So from our view, it would be, e- even for a developer like the IDs, a seasoned developer, it would be prohibitive to development, in our view. Again, this is just, now I'm in the realm of opinion, so this is my opinion, so do take this with what you will. But it'd be prohibitive to say, you must wrap four thousand feet of sidewalk around your development. We feel like we, in the planning department, would rather see the residents themselves served with interior sidewalks than wrapping this entire thing with sidewalk. Now, you can see, they're already wrapping this area of frontage here. They're not wrapping this area of frontage, but that's because there's a sidewalk across the street there and they're wrapping to that and be required to strip there. But what we would ask them to do is to grant us a sidewalk easement along these sections of frontage. So if we ever, which we were going to want to, because our whole desire in this municipality is to work our way south and hooks, hook in Hawks Ridge as part of our master plan.
Correct.
We would like that easement from them. That way, we have the ability to do that without having to come back ten years from now and get it from them in a painful process.
Absolutely, yeah.
What's the size of the easement, the width?
Our sidewalk easements width are something like fifteen feet, I want to say, so it's not very wide. It pretty much can only serve a sideb- and the easement language will say that. We're not gonna get a sidewalk easement and then, like, try to throw a sewer main in there. That's not what the easement's dedicated for. If we have to do that, we would come back and need to establish a sewer easement at that time.
Well, it should be from the road right of way back to wherever the-
Yeah, be fifteen feet in addition to the road right of way.
It's, it's not just this piece of property either, just so y'all know.
Yeah.
We're trying to do that township-wide.
We just got as a part of our safe streets, or our, our safe, uh, Safe Crosses School, can't even talk. We're going after another grant, Safe Streets for All. That's been on my mind today. Um, we just got the easement with, uh, AMP Realty, who owns Somerset, to extend all of this sidewalk through here. We're able to work in the right-of-way through this small portion here.
Yep.
And then we're gonna stop here, because that's where our funds ran out, but because of the large population centers around the lake and here, the ultimate goal is to get all the way down there.
Miles, not that I want to try and get off track here a little bit.
Yep, sorry, I'm going, I went off track a little bit.
Is this a water main easement that goes all the way through here?
The water main easement goes right straight through the turnaround.
Through here?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I don't believe the easement-
Yeah, I'm not trying to injure the city tonight.
Yeah.
Instead of coming down through this wetland and, and this road, why wouldn't you just come all the way around and go out that way? Future thought.
Yeah, that's something-
Future's on, that's as far as I want to go.
No, no, I think, I think that's fine. We would probably just get that easement from you so we had that option. With all this being established, if you were open to making the connection here and BSNA was open to working with us on their parcel, then we'd absolutely do that.
I wondered about that when they were talking about the excessive, uh, traffic, if they could extend that out to Webster Road.
Unfortunately, our sidewalk ordinance doesn't read, though, you know, like, secure the easement in the way that makes the most logical sense. It reads fifteen feet off of the, right of way.
Logic very seldom comes into play.
Yeah. Well, it's hard, because when you write these ordinances, you're writing them for a one-size-fits-all and, you know, development is kind of case-by-case thing.
Yeah, it is.
I don't see any harm in having easement along the road for either party myself.
No, I don't think, I don't think you-
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think you guys-
They don't got something to us at all.
Yeah, you don't lose anything. You have a large buffer between you.
Yeah.
If, we're not trying to require you to do it, so it's not prohibitive to you guys.
Right.
Or at least I'm not suggesting that.
But I think that there are options other than the right of, that path for the pathway.
It's for future anyways. It's just like another parcel. It's, it's for future, because we have, we have subdivisions that are put in and,
Yeah.
Yeah. That they, they don't have sidewalks, but in the future, we might need them to connect, make connectivity.
It's possible.
And down through there, when people coming from Bath, they're not gonna walk, want to walk around that whole complex. They're gonna want to walk straight down the road
Well, that's point, too, yeah.
Go straight, straight to their destination, if they can.
So, Miles, how much of that road is public road and how much is private?
Yep, so, I mean-
Because I was not aware that the township, or the county took over.
Yeah.
And they-
Yeah, were you?
This is all public road.
Yeah.
All the red?
Yep.
Oh, it all is, so that's nice. I'm glad.
So that's why these dr- these turnarounds are large enough for emergency vehicles, and then once you get off into this in Somerset, that's on AMP Realty. These are privately maintained parking lots and drives.
Yeah.
And privately maintained sidewalk network. So.
Anybody got any other questions?
No.
Looks good.
You know, I, I wouldn't be in favor of a traffic study, but I would be supportive of a traffic count, because we do have those, uh, I think they're like a hose that runs across the road, and the county owns some of those.
The county actually has a, a thing they can put up in. It don't even show the speed or anything.
No, but it shows the time counts.
Just the times, yeah.
In, I think, fifteen-minute increments or something like that.
We could, we-
I can work with the road on that.
It might be nice to have that information as we work on redesigning and redoing Webster Road.
George, do, do you want to follow up with them on that?
I'll call them tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because our next meeting, they could probably get that to us before our next meeting, because I think we have a gap week. So our next meeting, we don't have to make the packet to the seventh or eighth, and we don't have a meeting to the fourteenth, so that gives them two and a half weeks to get us data.
It would be interesting to know. I imagine most of the traffic goes south and gets on the freeway.
Yeah, the last count we have was like twenty twenty-one, so it's been a while.
Yeah, and the traffic patterns are changing, some of it because of construction.
Yeah. Well, Webster Road's busier. I think anyone would say that drives Webster Road, that there's more traffic than there used to be.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot more traffic.
Try to get off the westbound exit and make a left turn. We're waiting a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments? All right, let's move on to the next item, then.
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Well, yeah, we might as well, I guess. I mean, there's, we like public comments, or at least I do, so. The sundial classical homestead would be next, correct?
Okay, so we're closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, yep. Thanks, Sam.
You want to give us, uh, your staff report?
Yep, sorry, John, I'm just getting to it here.
If there's people here that want to comment, I'm certainly going to be entertaining them, unless somebody objects.
No, that's fine, just for process and for the purpose of our minutes, we need to record that it was open and closed.
Okay, that's fine. Try and keep me on course here, Lexi.
Okay. All right, for everyone that, uh, isn't familiar with this one, this is a little bit of a different, uh, category. So the last development we just looked at was a multifamily residential that exceeded eight units, so it was permitted in that district by special use permit. This is an educational institution within the low-density residential zoning district, which is a use permitted by right. Uh, we do put educational institutions in the commercial land use category. Uh, that word "commercial" doesn't always mean what, there's only really two distinctions in terms of zoning, land use, policy, and that's, you're either residential or you're commercial. So "commercial" doesn't just mean business. A church is commercial. Um, or religious institution, however you want to call it. Um, so this is going to be up for a site plan review only. It does not go to the Board of Trustees. It does not require a public hearing. Um, they have been intro'd at the Planning Commission, just to remind everyone, and we have now completed, um, unlike our last development, the whole agency review. So all the agency comments we have have been provided, and our planning department recommendations for, uh, proposed conditions of, uh, approval have also been completed. So there is a number of them here. Um, I would just will say, for the sake of the developers not getting freaked out that you're seeing a long list of conditions, a lot of these are pretty standard, so it's basically, you have to turn in, when you go for a building permit, construction plans, as is normal with any development. These are just saying that a lot of our agencies that looked over the site plans will also look over the construction plans, which is pretty normal and most building departments require anyways. We just put it in our recommendation for, uh, conditions of approval. That way, we're transparent with, really, you guys, that it's gonna take place. That way, you're like, wires are building per man. We're like, we're waiting on the drain commission. You're like, why are they involved? They're always involved. We're just telling you upfront. Um, we also put stuff like the developers are responsible to ensure that all, uh, standards from the American Disabilities Act are met. That's a law that you have to follow anyways, but we put on here, again, to be transparent with you, and so we just have, we can hold your feet to the fire if it's not met. Um, some of these, uh, came from the police department, which is sound, because they're not shown on this set of plans, because they can't be, because we're not having it's thorough interior plans. But it sounded like you guys were open to most of those. For the planning commission's sake, we did have, because of the nature of this land use, and just so you guys are fully informed, you know, there's a particular concern, I think, these days, when it comes to any institution that's gonna have the enormous responsibility of having youth, you know, uh, in that institution for any given period of time, be it childcare, uh, pre-K, education, some kind of after-school program. I know there's a lot of these, like, STEAM facilities now. So we just wanted to meet with them and then police and fire and just, you know, get their perspective on what's the safety plan for this, how's this all going to work? We live in a crazy time, unfortunately, and they were open to that, and I would, you know, we appreciate that a lot. They worked really close with coming to us, uh, with the police chief and hearing out his concerns and his thoughts, and have been very reasonable. Um, even, you know, some of my more, like, we were just thinking, you know, people drive cars through buildings these days. It doesn't, you know, it's a crazy world. And we were thinking about strategies to mitigate some of that, and they, you know, they were amenable to changing their site plan and adding balliards in front of the building itself as kind of a blockade. So that's just a small example. They've been willing to work with us on some of this stuff, which we appreciate that. And we have that condition for the balliards even in here, but, uh, it's really not needed now, because they sent us new plans and we weren't sure if we were gonna get those or not on time. But if you vote on those plans tonight, then you'd be voting on those taking, uh, place on the, being established on the site. In terms of how this site will work, let me go to this, the one pager we got set up and zoomed in a little bit here, and I can talk about kind of our thoughts and feelings about this site. So I know when we had the first meeting, uh, the gentleman or the resident that lived here had some concerns, and we asked them to beef up some of the landscaping on that property line, which they were willing to do. Um, you know, there's been a lot of concerns from these people that live down here in this cul-de-sac about traffic flow, and there's already a lot of traffic on the street. Now, they have the dedicated inlet and the dedicated outlet, which really can't get a better traffic flow situation than that, I think. Um, the road commission had no concerns with it, and I, I'm not a traffic engineer. If the engineers at the road commission, to me, are saying, we don't have a concern, then I guess I don't have a concern. Um, I'll leave it to them to decide where a concern is warranted and where it's not. Um, we were good on the lighting. The photometric plan that came in looked good to us. Um, I think you guys talked to the health department, and they were good on the, um, the well that you're going with, and then they're going, one interesting thing about this development is they are tapping into the sewer system, but because, and correct me, engineer, if I'm wrong, uh, they, you are tapping into a force main system there, so they're, I get a little bit creative with how they're going about that, and it will be requiring a pump system.
That's right.
Yeah, so that's gonna, you know, affect their legacy cost a little bit, but we'll allow them to get on public sewer. It's not unheard of. It's a little bit more rare, but we have a number of facilities. Like, I think the most recent one is A and D Repair.
Yeah.
Tapped into the force main. They run a pump twenty-four-seven, so it's not unheard of. Um, I guess that's really it from the staff's perspective. I don't know if you want to have the developer give their view, or if you want to go to you guys' comments.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to open the meeting. Does anybody have any objections? Open the meeting?
No. I moved to open the meeting.
Okay, thank you, George. We'll open the meeting then. Anybody want to make any comments?
This chair opens up the meeting to the poll.
Step up to the podium. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Chris Hagerman, one-two-eight-one-two, Webster Road. Uh, just referenced Miles' last statement about the pump system, having to run a pump on, is it waste or water?
Yeah, it's, it's waste, so sewage.
So my only concern with that would be, um, how effective are the pumps and how long do they last? And are they ultimately responsible to make sure that the pumps are functioning, and what can it do, I guess, if, uh, if the pumps fail, I guess?
Yeah, no, those are all good questions. Um, so the, the developers have been working with SCUMA, and there are engineers on it. They're a hundred percent responsible. And if the, uh, pump fails, it's gonna be a messy situation, but it'll be their messy situation.
When you say "there," what do you mean?
Uh, the developer, this institution. It won't affect, basically, they will be the point where they will no longer have pressure.
It'll be the private entity.
And everything will be flowing to them. That's not a great position to be in when it's sewer. So they have every incentive to make sure there's constant pressure.
Excuse me.
You normally design those for redundancies, so you have two holding tanks, two pumps, two, then they usually alternate.
How does that size compare with, say, one of our pump stations?
Our pumps are much larger.
Okay, I figured they would.
Huge difference, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'll be, if they were to establish something like one of our pumps, it'd be cost prohibitive. It would never make sense for them.
That's totally unnecessary anyway.
Yeah. I mean, we're moving the entire municipality. They're moving one facility. But they'll have to work with SCUMA. That's again, one of our conditions is one, and obviously this level of plans, a site plan, doesn't have that level of specificity on how the pumps are going to work, but the construction plans will have some of that in the civil set portion, and SCUMA will have to review that and approve that prior to a building permit being issued. So if the, and once again, I'm not a civil engineer, but, so I'm relying on them to do their job if I, but I would say I have faith in the SCUMA engineers. I think they're some of the best in the game, so.
Yeah, they're very good. I've worked with them for years. I've got several questions, and you're the engineer, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Name's Daniel Pinkerton.
I'm kind of curious as to why you're running the utilities way back to a utility shed that's looks to be several hundred feet from the road right away. That's a lot of underground utility expense.
It looks like it's very far from the road right away, but that's just because it's so zoomed in. It's just a, maybe two-hundred feet. This, this leg here. This leg here is only two-hundred seventeen feet. So it's actually much more compact than, than it looks like. But we wanted to run the utilities to the existing utility pole. And to minimize the rerouting of that.
Oh, okay.
It can feed the buildings, the future buildings. It can feed the buildings without having to tamper with the driveway or the parking lot. So it feeds each of these buildings.
Okay. Well, you know, I just was kind of curious about it. Wouldn't be my preferred location for it, but that's opinions. And I was kind of curious as to why you're putting the hoop house in the front, because it seems to me as though a lot of that parcel in the back could be permaculture farming. And the hoop house would be more of an asset, I would think, closer to the permaculture farming area than it would be out near the highway.
That was a question we had as well, actually.
Sarah Wilensky, Director of the Program. That's intentional for student safety, just to keep students away from the road. We would like our students to go from the classroom to the back of the property to play and access the land and the permaculture activities. We don't want to send them towards the road, so therefore putting some things closer to the road allows us to configure the classroom farther back.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you don't envision the students in the hoop house, then?
They will be, but as far as where the classroom is and then coming right out of the classroom to run into the playground, open space, play area, we just want them to, direct them away from the road when they're going outside to play. Yes, they certainly will be going to the hoop house to work, but free play will be happening behind it.
So she, she's saying if they move the hoop house back, everything else has got to move up?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, yes. If the hoop house was farther back, the classroom would be closer.
I think they're asking why can't it go behind where it's at now.
Right, I just want the whole classroom farther away from the road. Noise, distraction, safety, just want to.
I think they're asking why it can't go behind what you have now without moving it up.
Why the hoop, oh, because I think it gets so wooded and congested there.
We might do other things some other times.
There's a lot of brush cover.
We just don't want to plan for that part of the property.
Well, and currently, as far as sun, the hoop house should be in the sunniest area, and that's open where the sun is.
That makes sense, yeah.
Where if we go back here, it's all under.
Yeah, okay, okay.
One thing that I, one thought we had about the hoop house, yeah, and if, yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to this, is so when most people look at planning, like, we're talking about a lot of nuanced stuff here. We're talking about drives, traffic flows, where the utility shed is going to be. Mo- most people could care about any of that, but your average general population person is driving by and they're going to say, one, they're going to be like, they're not going to notice you guys at all, or they're going to say that looks like a lot of clutter. How, so with hoop houses, and we have many in the township, we have a couple farmers that have them in kind of the frontage. I don't hear any complaints, and I think they look pretty nice from the front. I've also seen some hoop houses though where people store a lot of materials that would be used in the hoop house, kind of around the hoop house, so that's my concern of the storage of materials around the hoop house, so can you get, provide some assurances that this isn't going to look terrible?
Yes.
I'm trying to put that in the most basic way possible.
Right, so as a classical program, one of our values is pursuing that, which is beautiful in nature, and so we're very aware of the aesthetic and the outside look and the student experience of that, and certainly our neighbors' experience of that.
Yeah.
So just as a core value, we're going to avoid that cluttered look. I guess, you know, hoop house is a word to use. I think I threw that out there, but we could more precisely call it a greenhouse. We could call it something, a solarium. So the look is not industrial agriculture at all.
Yeah, we don't have an elevation for this hoop house solarium, whatever one calls, what is it going to look like?
It's going to be beautiful.
You're selling me on that.
It may or may not have hoops. We literally have not worked down to that precision. It's phase two, so we are very much in phase one. But my goal also to actually put some of the gardening and farming stuff, the agriculture things, towards the road is that I know those will be designed in a beautiful way, so if Matthew Romans, our farm manager, wants to talk about that, we have very strong vision about permaculture that is very inviting to the community, and we've talked about opening up community gardens. I was down at Bircham Hills, talking to their director of programming down there, talking about having their residents come, so we see this, again, the reason for some of the agricultural things to be closer to the road is because of that community garden aspect of it also. And so access from the parking lot to some of those gardens, we wanted to keep those out front.
Kate, you had something?
I had some sort of separate questions if we're done, if you're done.
Oh, when, when I hear the term hoop house, I think of a hoop house with plastic over it as opposed to a greenhouse, which is usually a frame with either hard plastic or glass covered.
More an atrium type thing.
Yeah, more of an atrium type thing, so they're two different structures. Yeah, I was talking to Egypt this afternoon about this. I think you people probably know Egypt, yeah. And I didn't have this plan with me at the time, but she was really curious about your permaculture, because that is kind of a odd sight in the terms of it's quite wet, but I think it would lend itself well to permaculture.
Yeah, we can call that a greenhouse. We can change up the term. I didn't mean to create a barrier there.
No, no, that's fine.
No, I just think if you call it a greenhouse, though, that means something.
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of entirely different.
Yes, we really see these visions that's built with natural materials, built with, you know, stone coming up, glass, wood, you know, a very fits-with-the-earth kind of aesthetic, not industrial at all.
Yeah, that's a different concept.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
I was just curious, what is your target enrollment? Based on your classroom size?
Yes, so our, again, one of our core values is to stay very small. I'm a lifelong teacher, special ed teacher, and I understand that small numbers is critical to academic success. So for this phase, we're looking at about thirty-five students. Eventually, as we grow, we may increase. I can't see us ever getting above a hundred and twenty at our max, and that's much other development down the road.
How does that impact things like parking and traffic if it starts at thirty-five and then takes off and becomes a hundred and twenty?
It would involve other building and other lots, and we were not going to fix that. We're not going to try to cram a hundred and twenty students into this development at all.
Okay. Is this a charter school or is this a private school?
It'll be a private school.
Private school, so tuition funded?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We're currently functioning as a support for homeschooling families, but once we're in the building, then we'll go through the paperwork to be a non-public school.
Okay.
You're out of Wilmere now, aren't you?
We are, renting space there.
Right, no other questions?
Oh, George?
So I had a couple things, one specific thing. Specific. When they come in and out of the driveway to go in, is there a way to maybe put some type of, I know you have the trees there, but I, I struggle with like at some of our drive-throughs we have, they're sitting in the, in the queue to get service, and then you're driving by and the lights are hitting you in the face. So we've tried to address some of that stuff the last couple of years. When you pull in, Pat's house is relatively not at the road, but you know where it's at. Is, and, and you've been on the lots, you know how it's all going to lay out. I, I really don't. I can look at the number, but I can't walk it and see where the lights are going to shine in his house, so I'm just asking you if maybe you could consider a, I know a fence that's maybe up off the road, or off the ground, I mean, but not twenty feet in the air and don't have to be nine hundred feet long, but maybe wherever that light might actually hit his house or the house across the street where the light might actually hit the house across the street. Because it might be someone lived there that's, that's a hundred years old, that sleeps a lot, or, you know, goes to bed early, and in the wintertime, them lights will be hitting, you know, at five, six o'clock at night, them lights will be hitting the house.
Well, that was my other question. What are your school hours? I mean, that
Typical school hours.
Like, okay, that's what I, I wasn't sure if farming hours require different hours, but.
As far as traffic in an hour.
Got like the chickens out, you know, but.
Yeah, traffic will match typical school hours. Yeah, the house across the street is mine, so I don't want the lights up coming in late. So I think we can talk more about the photometric study and how we designed it, that all lights really should be aiming east, not west.
I was referring to vehicles.
To vehicles, yeah.
I think that's fine.
Just as they make that right.
Just basically add something in here to help when lights are coming.
Yeah, so when the lights are coming in, or when they're going down, when they're accidenting, they're coming along the buildings, and you get into your phase three and they're going along the buildings, they're reflecting off through glass or whatever's there, but then they're going to shine directly north across the road into your house. So, so I didn't know if maybe some, where that actually, maybe at the end of that.
Yep, that's going to be the, that's going to be the point of conflict, is right in here. They're turning in, the lights are going to shine here. Once they're in the straightaway, they're basically, lights are averse from there as they pull out.
Right.
They'll hit you guys' house across the street once they get into this point. But we can't do any, I mean, you can, I would suggest, you know, maybe some landscaping in the front could help you, but we couldn't go as hard as like a fence, but what, what's the ask here? What are you asking for?
When you turn in, before you make the turn to go south, where your cursor is right now. Somewhere in there where, so when they turn in, that's, they're going to hit directly Pat's house.
Yep.
And when they turn out, they're going to hit their own house.
Yep.
So they can't do anything on the, on going out part.
Yeah, you could buffer some trees in the front.
More vegetation, more trees in that area, so up top here, like halfway down, some more vegetation.
I mean, it might only be a six-foot space, I mean, right there at the, right there at the drive. I mean, you maybe put.
That's why I'm asking, what's the ask? You want to see a fence? You want to see a double row of trees?
I want to see some, I want to see something solid there that's not going to shine in Pat's house.
What about a berm? Is there room for a berm?
No, I wouldn't recommend against.
No, the trees, it'll go through the trees. He'll still see it through the trees, but if you had, if you had a section of fence even this wide and as, as wide as where the, wherever them lights hit, do you, do you follow me?
You just mean like a privacy fence kind of.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking that you do it. I'm not telling you to do it. I'm just asking you to consider.
Just to be clear, you can ask that they do it.
Pardon?
Just to be clear, you could ask them to do it.
I think it would be, as a neighbor, the best thing you could do, and so I would ask that that be blocked, that lights, that something permanent, solid be there to keep the light from going to Pat's house.
So you can recommend.
It don't have to go down to the ground, it just has to be within that, within that vehicle lighting pattern, so when they pull in, I think you guys understand what I'm asking.
Yeah, and if we write it up like that, that the residents will be blocked from vehicle lights. We'll know exactly where to put that fence, so we actually achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Right, because you know where the drive is going to be, and you know where the lights are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want that.
Is that okay? We're going to add that as a condition.
Okay.
If that's what we're speaking about, are you guys amenable to composite or wooden privacy fence for a distance not to exceed just thirty, forty feet?
Not even that. Whatever it takes to block out there.
Whatever it takes, whatever it takes based on the angle of the car coming in.
That car coming in, shining directly on his house.
Yep. How do you guys feel about the lights when they come, when they're facing the street more?
We'll accept that as part of us causing this problem.
Now, they could put one across where they have their fence now, they could probably put a little bit of.
Or they could put, they could put landscaping, a couple smaller, stick home, street trees. Usually a species that you plant that's at a four- or five-year age range, doesn't grow above twelve feet tall at adult height. Those would be like a street tree.
I think they might want to block the sign and thing right in there.
Okay. I think that's fair.
For our own property, I think we would just accept it.
Okay.
I think we're not concerned about it.
Are you okay with that?
I don't care at all. What is, what is the planning commission want? I've heard my, I like street trees, but I also want the sign to be visible. I agree with that, because I want people to be able to make their turn.
And people pulling in and out, I really don't want every good block viewed.
Well, we can't, the road commission wants that.
On your side, you could plant something on your side to take care of it.
Yeah, I think that the fact that they're affiliated with this means I don't think we need to watch out for them.
Yeah, but the thing is, one thing that we always want to assume in planning is just, we're long-term thinkers.
That's, yeah, that is where my statement was going next, is yes, but for the future, these are still things that are still changeable.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, I don't, I hope you guys live a long and happy life. But man. In, in this, in this housing market, somebody comes with that million-dollar check, you know, I don't know, you know? That can move, a million dollars can move a lot of people.
So do you want to put in a stipulation for that, a short privacy fence to block?
You can't put, per our zoning, you can't put a privacy fence in the front yard.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
No, we've already, we've already passed that, so.
Yeah, we already passed.
We got a condition.
I didn't know if you had put that down.
No, so our, our recommended condition to be added on is that a privacy fence be installed along the western property line to obscure the lighting from cars, traffic.
And it doesn't have to go, I don't think, have to go clear to the ground or anything necessarily.
I, I would like, if we're going to go the realm of privacy fence, I'd like to see a standard six-foot. It can be composite or wooden, I don't care about that, but a standard privacy fence. When we all think about the.
Sufficient to make sure it's achieving its goal.
Oh, yeah.
But a standard six-foot Home Depot Menards privacy fence.
And they'll still have the tree buffer behind it.
They'll still have all the trees as is cited on the plan. When it comes, well, I think the thing we're on now is
They're two hours.
What about, what about the front end?
To the north.
Yeah.
Anybody who would be potentially living in that house in the future would be living there knowing what's across the street.
That is a good point. They're buying into the issue, right?
And you have to look at.
Issue used low, I'm not saying you guys are an issue, but
And look at.
The land conflict as they perceive it.
Yep, look at when they, when the school hours are too. Very sellable, cars be there that late where, you know.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Just if it be in the morning, it would be probably an AM problem, not a PM problem.
Yeah, it's going to be peak times. I mean, in the winter, obviously, it gets dark early.
Yeah, it's pretty dark early in the winter.
In the winter, it does, yeah, five o'clock.
What, to that question, this did come up as a staff question in our review. Schools have events. What's your, what, what do events look like for you guys? Because that could go out, that could go outside our normal hours, though.
Yes, I don't think I can make a specific prediction for ten years from now what our events will like. I can tell you that currently this year we have had two events for the whole school year, one per semester, which is an evening event.
But when you have your own space, this was one of our staff questions, and I'm glad we're talking about this, do you foresee like you renting out your facility on a Saturday morning for a baby shower?
Possibly. It's hard to make a concrete statement what we'll absolutely do in the future.
Okay.
We had thought we would use, we would rent, we would rent other facilities at times for things we needed to hold, where we needed more parking or something.
Oh, that's a good point. Because our parking is so small, if we're going to hold major fundraiser events like that, we're not going to be able to hold them here. We already know that. We don't have the parking, we don't have the space.
Okay.
So we'll be going to event spaces for the big.
That's good, because I just want to. That's good, because I just wanna say, as a part of this body's approval tonight, they're approving a very specific land use. Educational institution. Now, obviously, there's events that have a clear nexus with that land use, right, parent-teacher conference. But if the event is like a baby shower, it's not necessarily education. So you gotta be careful what you do there.
I don't think we have any intent to fund it, but anything other than educational programs Monday through Friday.
Okay, 'cause if we were five.
The whole budget is based on that funding model.
Yeah, and I just wanna be transparent, if, you know, the planning department gets a phone call, hey, there are fifty cars parked out here on a Saturday. They got some fireworks for Fourth of July, like, we're gonna, that's not an educational related land use.
No, we already, as part of like our initial talk was like, we don't want to live across from a hundred car parking lot. We just, we don't wanna build that. That's not what we want in our backyards. And so we already made the decision, oh, we'll go somewhere else. There's plenty of great event spaces, we'll rent them.
And that's why it's a pull-through, like, we've even looked at when, if the school did get a little bigger than what she said. There's still enough for staff and then parent, the idea is people pull through drop off. It's not a place where if you come here, you're not parking your vehicle. You know, there's other school options if you need to park your car.
Are you planning to follow a traditional school year calendar?
Barely, yeah.
So not in the summer?
We're not year-round, no.
No, okay.
We're actually a little bit shorter than the public school calendar.
Okay.
You're not gonna do a summer school program at all? That's interesting.
We could do some summer day camp type things occasionally, but we're not doing like schooling, um.
Cause there's a huge demand for summer programs.
Yes, as we grow, we, you have someone you wanna send to us, let us know.
Recruit us the thirty students that went to the whole program.
That, that's phase two, that's phase.
It's very, yeah. We're very, uh, we want to do what we do really well, and so we just want to stay very small and do what we do really well before we, um, consider growing and adding more programs.
Great, great paddle. Anybody got any other comments? Everybody done? Thank you, let's move on to the.
Well, what do you wanna do here?
You wanna vote on this tonight? You know, what's?
So we're, that's the point, I'm trying to put this in the planning commission, where we have all the information we can give.
Okay. What's the feeling of the planning commission? Do you wanna vote on this?
Um, sure, based on the, the amendments.
There's more information we, we would need before taking a vote.
And do you wanna consensus of all the, uh, conditions that we've added and modified?
I can run through them real quick.
Why don't you do that, Miles, just in case?
Yeah, I mean.
And you said this is within the site use designation already, it falls within what it's already designated for?
Yeah, within our zoning ordinance, this falls within a buy right land use, eh, under educational institutions. And that was, that was a restricting element for us on what the ask could be for some of these conditions. So I won't read them verbatim, but I'll just quickly kinda go through them. So we talked about the American Disabilities Act requirement. Um, we talked about, uh, confirming that all easement conditions are met. We put that responsibility on the developer as well, because there could be some sewer water easements that we might not even be aware of. And so if that comes up and we find that they put a parking lot on one of our easements without doing their due diligence, then, you know, that's on them. If we come through and we rip that whole parking lot up, um, not to be coy, I guess, but, you know, what. It, it's happened, it happened with Noco Lost, um.
Sure did.
Uh, that all sewer conditions and designs shall apply, or shall comply with SCUMA standards. SCUMA shall, uh, review and approve the construction plans that submitted prior to a building permit. Stormwater management shall apply with the Drain Commission, so just kinda stormwater flow, um, is important. Uh, I, we talked about them needing a well, so they have to get permitting from the Mid-Michigan Health Department. We don't say it in this, but, you know, again, per, uh, state building code, uh, a building permit cannot be issued before that permit is secured from the Health Department. You have to have your supply of water and sewer before a building permit can be issued in the state of Michigan. Driveway needs to be permitted by the road commission. The fire department had a condition in there about the Knox box, uh, that's per state fire code. Uh, if anyone's unfamiliar with that is, that's the box that they need for keys and whatnot, uh, to gain access to the facility. They had something about there's five marked with signals. Uh, they just want the, uh, the fire lanes marked per state of Michigan fire code, uh, the camera requirement that the police department spoke with you guys about. Uh, door entry requirements, uh, from the police department as well, uh. We talked about the balliards for safety, which they added to their plans. Uh, more camera requirements from the police department, another camera requirement from the police department. Camera, police department, police and law camera stuff here. I mean, I, I hope we're not on the overkill with that. But safety for this is a kinda paramount. Um, and the, just so we're clear too, before any development gets a certification of occupancy, there's a safety walkthrough inspection that takes place and all those conditions have to be met prior to that CFO being granted. CFO is the last thing any development needs before the facility can go in operation. Uh, township engineer should review and approve the construction plans prior to a building permit being issued. And the applicant has a responsibility to ensure all easement agreements are submitted to the proper entity. So that might even be us, as is required by our ordinance for that sidewalk easement that we just talked about earlier. So they're gonna need to get us that, and that's what the agreement's for.
And this amendment would also include the fence.
And it would now includes fence, thank you so much, Trustee Hagerman.
Okay, everybody clear?
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll move that.
There a second?
Second.
We don't need to run this to the board, so consensus vote is fine.
That's fine.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, there we go, Miles.
Thank you, guys. Um, I'll just, I'll get with you guys. Uh, from here, we'll move into the building department's phase, so I'll kinda hand you guys over to them and you'll be working with the building department through the next phase.
Is this Bert? Is that the?
Uh, Bert Gale is the building official, but you'll most close to be working with our permit tech and our head building inspector, Nick Cack.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thanks for coming. If you have a good evening, what's left of it?
And then per the amendment to the agenda, I guess skip around here, so give me a sec, so we can get to Chris's presentation. All right.
Good evening, Chris Hagerman with the Bass School Museum Committee. I'm here to present about the master plan for the new, uh, museum project we got going. Um, I did forward a copy, a digital copy of the master plan, and it looks like some of you guys may have some. If not, I have some hard copies here, if anybody needs one. Uh, okay, so, uh, museum committee about two and a half years ago came up with an idea to, uh, build a museum to, uh, for many reasons really. One of which was to, uh, protect, protect our cupola, uh, to be open more to the public. We can't have a, a functioning public building, uh, attached to a school with direct access to it. So a couple of our reasons why we came up with this idea. Um, over the past two and a half years, we've worked to gain support through the school board, township board, um, township committees, eh, eh, the community and folks statewide. Uh, the master plan was put together by, uh, THA architects and Engineers and the members of the Bass School Museum Committee. Um, and if they're just, just as a side note, if there are any questions, just save them to the end and, uh, I'll answer any questions you guys have. Um, and thanks for having that already ready, Miles. Uh, I appreciate that. So just the master plan, it starts off with a little bit of history about it. You wanna scroll down to the first one, just kinda shows the history of it, the first couple pages, uh, how it is and the history of the museum and, and how we got to the point we're at. Um, opening the page two, uh, shows an overview of the memorial park. You can see, uh, there's a maintenance building right here with a yellow dot. That's basically where we're gonna do it. Uh, the school is in the process of working on getting that tore down, so we, they can clear the land for us. Uh, so that's working with the school. Uh, underneath that portion, you can see that we've already, we have some design goals for, uh, for our building. Uh, maintain existing pavilion, the gazebo that's sitting there. Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be working to incorporate that as well. Uh, and you'll see that later on. Uh, the existing building, you can see there, um, let's see. Uh, it, it's not gonna cover any of the, like, actual disaster part, but it's going to cover, um, it's gonna be over the original school. Um, sort of the, the foundation that you can see when you're up there. Uh, I already mentioned the historic, uh, the, the cupola up there, it's gonna have a garden as well. Also, it's gonna have, um, on page three there, um, twenty-one site part, uh, onsite parking. And we're working with the school and have permission with them to use that for overflow as well as some of the, um, parking on Main Street. We don't anticipate that too often if we have a big event, um, but again, I don't, I don't anticipate that too often. Uh, walkways, uh, there are walkways, uh, there's gonna be walkway, uh, a new sidewalk on, between Main and Webster. That'll be good access. It's gonna be on the south side of the park in between, uh, the church and where the, uh, museum will be. Uh, that is actually work, being worked on this, this year, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Um, gardens and existing pavilions, um, will, will, all remain. Uh, so here is a overview of our site plan, uh, which we have already worked with. Miles on to approve our parking or, and initially approve, make sure there's nothing he doesn't like and that it's gonna meet uh, particular standards of, uh, county, state, however, and especially township. Uh, but you can kinda see, our building is approximately eight thousand square feet. Um, shows a lot of sidewalks. I don't anticipate that much on the backside. Uh, but we definitely want something coming up to, uh, each particular part, uh, safety, obviously. Um, right here is the new safe route sidewalk, so that one will already be there.
Yeah, that is, not to interject, but.
No, that's.
There is the, the historical committee from the state. Is throwing a little bit of a wrench in that section, so we'll, big, big we'll see right there.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know yet. Mark's working on it.
Oh, all right. Let me know if there's anything I can do for it.
Yeah. They're really, Mark, the road commission's not happy with them.
Hmm, interesting. Um, then, um, that's the pullout there, for those of you who are looking through the book. You can't really see that unless you have the book. Uh, page seven, uh, another larger pullout there. Um, uh, there you go, page seven. Uh, so that basically shows the interior portion of how we laid it out. Uh, there's several tables in there. Those are not always gonna be there. What that, what that, uh, would facilitate is our alumni reunion that we house every year. There's, um, we needed, basically, we hold it in our current museum at the middle school. And we house it in the gym area. And that's one of those things that we felt we had to incorporate with the new museum is we can't have all these folks that have been graduated fifty plus years, going from middle school, traveling up to our new museum. We had to somehow incorporate that, and so that's how we did it, is we're gonna have tables that will be stored there. Uh, and once, uh, we do have that or even, uh, some other, uh, events that we would like to have there, uh, we'll put them out for those, but those areas will also be utilized. You can see right here, this will be like a meeting slash classroom with video, uh, technology such as this, uh, a small, um, well, not in there, but just some cabinets stays in the teaching area, lecture area. A traveling gallery, which we anticipate, you know, working with local artists or, um, just having, uh, things that we can change around a lot more, have different artists or whatever come in there. We can take that stuff out and put their stuff in. Uh, then we have our alumni gallery, which will more than, which would be pretty much always the same. But it would, you know, give us an opportunity to change it up a little bit more with, uh, putting stuff more in the middle. Where now, we're currently just stuck to the walls of our current location. And then our disaster gallery, uh, right there, which would be, um.
Sorry.
Whoa, that's okay. The disaster gallery, we're still trying to determine if we need to make that. So if these dotted lines represent like a movable wall, that's what those design, we'll be able to open that space up. Um, we're just debating if we need to open up the disaster gallery or not. Um, we haven't figured that out yet. Uh, so next, um, well, and then the tables, it would, uh, that seating area would accommodate approximately two hundred people is what we're, what we're working for. Uh, you can see some, like, a business office, admin office, place where we can set up, um, uh, new, uh, galleries and pictures and set all that stuff there. Uh, small kitchen, uh, so all it's gonna be is like a stove and a refrigerator and some cabinets, nothing, nothing fancy. What do we have to get? You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have full kitchen cooking and stuff like there. Storage, another closet. Uh, one of the biggest things that, um, we tried to incorporate is a, a bathroom for park, park use. Okay, so the bathroom, you can see up there in the upper right-hand corner. So that's gonna be accessible outside of normal business hours. Uh, it'll be closed overnight, uh, obviously. How we're gonna work the, the locks, whether township or us, or there're gonna be some sort of time blocks, which would probably be more desirable. Um, but that was one of the, we thought would be a great way to incorporate this being a, a community center, which is really what our goal is, is to make this a community center. And it, and it fills the need that, that the township needs is bathrooms up in that, decent bathrooms up in that area. Um, next, page eight, show, we start going to the exterior views. So you can see that is the original school, the top, the top one, that was the original one built in nineteen twenty-two on that site. And a big thing for us was to, uh, emulate that as much as possible while, while giving it, uh, an updated look. We were able to, we found the original blueprints for that school, uh, as well as rebuilt school, the exploded school. We found them in our, our museum stuff, our, our storage area. Uh, so we gave them, uh, to the architect and they used that to, to build this. And as you can see in this specifically, this is not the actual cupola. This is gonna be a replica, which on the next page you'll see in a second, we're gonna, we're putting that inside, that will, that will not be outside anymore. But we thought that was a good representation of what was there, um, meets a lot of our needs that, that we're gonna, uh, that we want out of that. Um, so yeah, go ahead. So this, and, and for those, the, that other view, that was the main street side. So originally, the school faced Main Street because that, that was the main street, everybody used that. This side is the Webster roadside. We wanted a little bit more modern while keeping with the same design platform. Um, if you look at the windows right there, you can kinda see, I don't know if you can zoom in a little, Miles, on that. But they actually were able to put a little image of the cupola in there, which is one of the goals of us, of the museum committee was to get that, get that thing inside and protect it. It's been outside since at least nineteen twenty-two, it's been out there over a hundred years, let's get it inside and give it a good life. Uh, you know, where people can enjoy it and we don't have to worry about bugs and, and birds and everything else. Uh, and you can also see the, the replica cupola up on top. Some of these details, although like here, um, they weren't necessarily in the original building as you saw in that other picture, but those were actually in the design plan of the original architectural design that we found. So that's why they put those there. Uh, let's see, uh, and after that, so you can see it's got some side views. So right here, this is the entrance to the bathroom, the side door, and that'll be able to be closed off. Uh, so you can't enter the museum during there, it'll be, uh, it'll be closed off for there. But you'll still be able to enter through that side door when, uh, we are not open. Uh, next, uh, is the cost estimate. So THA did their best, uh, to come up with a potential cost estimate based on cost predict, projections of two thousand twenty-five. They came up with a total cost of two point. They came up with a total cost of two point, sorry, four point two million. Um they put in a lot of contingencies, so some of the some of the things in there, design contingency, if we need to change something, move a wall, we don't like it. They put in some contingencies for them to to change that, uh they did a really good job. Um so you can see the two hundred twenty-seven thousand for design contingency, and they put a percentage there too, which we really appreciated. Uh allowances for furniture, technology, um cupola preservation and relocation, so we feel that they did a decent job. Um coming up with uh coming up with ways to make sure that this money that we're asking. In donations, grants, however we get it, that this number opens the door. We will be ready to open doors with that number, okay, hopefully less. Uh but then the next, the soft costs, that's design fees, so based on the percentage of the total. Uh total amount of the four point two million. They get eight percent of the construction cost to to design the building and the building cost that includes like. Uh heating and cooling, electrical, it includes all that stuff, so it's gonna have their stamp on everything that we need. So we can turn each plan over to whatever contractor we decide to go with, and then the next one down, you can see, oh.
Up too far, sorry.
Right there, so that's a construction schedule, so once we say, okay, we have X amount of dollars, we're ready to. We're ready to start having you design this, we're fast forward to, you know, we're we're getting close to our overall. Uh goal of five million total for the project, um they're gonna, as soon as we have some money in our bank. They're gonna they're gonna get that design going, they wanna see probably at least half to two thirds, which I would feel safe with at that point anyways. You know, I don't wanna have what they want for the design plan in there and then be like, okay, I got this really sweet design. Now I got no money to do the rest of it, so our intent is not as soon as we get some money or start it right now, it's we get the money, two thirds plus. Then we start doing the design and then they're anticipating uh about eighteen months for uh for the total construction. Um and then uh that's about it for the design, the rest of the book, there's several other pages, but that just sorta. Goes over how we got to where we got, original school, some of the design plan and stuff like that. Um but really, what it comes down to is so far in about the last month, when we started, we really kicked off our fundraising raising campaign campaign. Uh we've already met with Senator Sam Singh, uh Senator Sandra Anthony, staff from Alyssa Slackens uh office. Uh the reason why we chose those specific representatives, because they represent our area. Um Sen- Senator Singh is Clinton County area, Senator Anthony is Lansing area, but she's also the appropriation committee. Uh head, so it was important for us to talk to her to tell, get her on board to say, hey, this is important to us, we feel like it's important to Michigan. And hopefully she buys into it, which it sounds like she does, and and wants to help support us. Um I said, uh Representative Alyssa Slacken, again, she represents our area, so it was important for us to to talk to her as well. We've also spoke with Clinton County Board of Commissioners, thanks to you for being here for tonight, um and um. Uh we've presented to the county, the Township Board of Trustees as well in the past. Uh all these folks gave us strong support, willingness to help us seek funds as well as the township who. Uh generously uh helped pay for this uh master plan. Uh we've received uh letters of support from Senator Singh, uh recently from that uh Duitt Charter Township. Uh trustees, they've given us one and we're anticipating one from uh the Bath Township Board of Trustees as well. We have pitched our pitch it to them and and they seem to be in favor of it. Uh also, lastly, I guess, uh we're presenting to the Lions Club who are also in support of this, they reached out to this and and hope that they can be part of our whole. Whole thing once it's all together, so um and soon we'll be presenting to the Bath School Board. They they're already on board supporting us, um that's obviously their land, so we're asking permission for them to. Uh build on their land and they're more than happy to let us do that, so uh that's about it for me, uh any questions, anyone, anywhere?
On the layout, you have the bathrooms being opened, but there are stairs there, they would have to come through your front door for handicap access.
Uh can you scroll back? I think we have a decent view.
Audrey, you want the side profile?
Uh the the Webster Road profile where you can see the cupola.
It's right there.
Yeah, uh I don't have a good view of that right there, but. There should be maybe the top view.
I think that's, I think that's.
Yeah, this is the side view.
No, no, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, but maybe the top view will give us a better view of it, like uh.
Floor plan?
Yeah.
Floor plan.
Page seven. Hey, go ahead.
Yep, so those are the stairs there, and he's saying there's a ramp there, so maybe the.
That will open and go this way, so we have handicap accessibility.
Oh.
And it will still be closed off to the inside.
Yeah, because you got the door.
But also, I agree with what you're saying, and I think that's a detail that could be changed.
Yeah, you just put a ramp right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, these aren't set in stone, but these are what we came up with and right away, but either way, you know, we don't, what we don't wanna do is. It it looks more appealing to have that in front instead of something going twenty feet out that way. Uh but that that's something.
I think it's more accessible to have it there too, because if you have your handicap parking up front and then that, and this is your only ramp here, now they are going all the way around.
Yeah.
Where they're primarily gonna come when there's a large event and it's open, that's when most people are gonna be there and that's gotta be a convenient time to come through the front.
Yeah, and that's again, some some of the design plans that uh we can change up and and fix and do what we need to to.
Yeah.
One other comment, because my career has been catering, that kitchen is nowhere near for two hundred people what you would need. To do two hundred people.
So we hire a caterer, they come in, this is gonna be for warming, and they they warm everything, so it would be for events like if uh, I don't know. Uh.
They're not cooking the food onsite.
We're we are not cooking the food onsite, no.
Somewhere to like a wedding.
Yeah, so something if you.
They're not big.
Warm up bread or something and.
Like the reunions?
Yeah.
One hundred percent, that's exactly what it is, but they generally are uh providing everything warm already.
We don't wanna have to deal with health department inspections.
Yeah, the hot cards coming in.
Catering kitchen then.
Mm-hmm, something they can, you know, mostly countertops and stuff, can you go up just a little bit?
Yep.
Uh.
The other way.
Sorry, the other way.
Down, yep.
There we go, so it'll probably be, I mean, that's a hundred thirty-one square feet, um. Uh so lots of countertop and it and it can be any way that we want, they just put stuff where they put stuff. Uh but more just setting stuff out, being accessible from that area, we'll have an entrance into here. Into the kitchen and then through here as well as another entrance over here, and this parking here will be mainly mainly for staff such as that.
And that's at grade?
That's at grade, I I would assume so.
No stairs, is what I'm saying.
That's a southeast entrance?
That's important. It's a south entrance.
I would think so.
Yeah, I don't, I would imagine, but I don't, I mean, these are very initial ones.
Again, as a caterer, being at grade versus having to traverse stairs.
Oh yeah, it doesn't appear that those are there, but that's a a good point to consider when we're uh when we're coming up with our final design plan. Yeah.
They could put a direct on the on page seven, the one we're looking at, there's no north, south, east or west on that diagram, so that'd be helpful. I'm sure when they get, when you guys get full site plans.
Yeah, this is again, it's this is not a full site plan, this is merely for um.
Fundraising.
Fundraising, make sure you guys know what's going on, this is.
Because I had, I had to think about it for a second and I'm familiar with the site, so.
Yeah, yep, this is uh this is merely to community engagement.
So so north is uh.
Nor.
It's going this way.
Yeah.
North.
Yeah, the front entrance.
Webster Road is right here, the bathroom's right here, this is Main Street over here.
So the bathrooms in the northeast corner, correct?
Yep, if you scroll out just a little bit, yep. Uh the baseball fields will be up in that corner right there, you might be able to go out a little bit more. Uh I don't know if it shows one or not, no.
Not on this one, it does on a different one.
So I wanted to say, like, from the planning department's perspective, you know, their downtown Bath Village Bath, whatever you wanna call it, is an interesting place. And it needs cat, we like we talked with Mr. Estre's development, there's a catalyst that needs to happen, and I think. You know, from my perspective of like putting on the community development hat, this would be huge and um. I guess I wanna know, my main question is, you guys are doing some fundraising, I have heard from some developers, I guess, who have talked to you guys about the fundraising. Do you guys have a like, I personally, I I'm in the realm of a penny, and I wanna give you money, where can I give you money?
Okay, that's a very good question, so uh we do have a website, baskwomuseum.org, it also goes to dot com and dot net, so if you look up any of them. Uh all one word, you can go there, uh we have Venmo and PayPal, a good old fashioned check that works too, I know some folks like to do that. Uh but you can find all that information on our website, uh there's links that you can do, like QR codes to it, or you can click right on it. You can pick building fund or general fund on these things, uh we tried to make it as easy as possible. Uh but those are the major ways.
That's shareable, like a funding link that's shareable, that I can share to Facebook or anything, okay.
Yep, share our link, we try to put as much out there as we can and um the the master plan that we have here tonight. Uh as well as a flipbook of some other pictures that we have of the building itself, a little bit more detailed than these. Um are on our website, baskwomuseum dot dot org.
And I would say also, from the municipal aspect, um we are we're applying for all the grants that we can find. Some of the grants, especially the large federal ones, are only open to municipalities to apply. So I, part of what we're asking the Township Board of Trustees for is um to apply for those grants on our behalf.
Yeah.
Which is allowed, um and then also for letters of support, and I think if the planning committee wanted to offer their support. From a planning perspective, as you indicated, and how you see it benefiting the community, I think that could only help us in the grant application process.
Yeah, I understood that was you guys' big uh reason for this presentation tonight is you guys would request that letter from the, so I don't know, John, if you wanna. What do you think?
Um yeah, so yeah, that's uh that would be, you know, the more municipality business um. Businesses that we can get or organizations such as the Lions Club who have said that they would like to support us, the more we can get folks like that. Uh involved saying, yes, we feel like this is a a valid thing and and we wanna see this happen, the more it's gonna help on our grants, the grants are anywhere from ten thousand to. Five million dollars are the ones that we've looked at, I mean, just almost endless, so um but we've had, we've had a lot of good. Um a lot of good opportunities as far as grants come in front of us, so. Uh but if you guys wanted to uh work on a letter of support, we could forward. One that we've gotten from some of the other folks, if you guys want a template, or if it's something that you're not even interested in, I'm cool with that too. Just being able to present is good for me.
What's the feeling of the, go ahead, George.
Can I recommend that we allow the the two commissioners that aren't here to watch the presentation tonight on the video? So they get to see it and then you guys in the meanwhile can.
Put together.
Put together uh some type of document for us.
Yeah, and if and if that is the will of the planning commission, we're obviously in support of that on the staff side, would you mind? Uh Chris sending me a template of what some other people have said, just to lighten our workload?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be helpful.
And then I don't, I don't, do we individually sign that document or?
How we typically do it with our letters of support and various planning letters that we sent in the past, including the letters we sent on the Eagles behalf is. We'll typically draft something up and then we'll have the chair sign it, the chair can speak on behalf of the planning commission.
Cause I I I know like in some cases.
But if you wanted, I don't think there is anything wrong with having all your signatures on there, it might be more personal.
The reason I ask that is because not not this necessarily, but some projects might come before, but I I don't wanna give any example, but we've had many. Projects come before us, uh like around the lake or whatever.
Yeah.
Um parks, for instance, or museum.
Sure.
And not everybody's in favor of supporting that.
Sure.
So maybe not everybody's in some page, no offense to you.
It's true, not not, maybe not everybody's in favor of supporting museum.
Well, if John feels like there is that overwhelming difference of opinions, I mean, the planning commission can always take a vote here to sign a letter of support, it's however the chair wants to run.
I just wanted to talk that out, yeah.
That's fine, George, what's the feeling of the planning commissioners, do you wanna have the staff draft a prototype letter? Bring it up to the next planning commission meeting?
Do you wanna make that into a motion?
Can.
I don't think we need a motion, well, I don't care, do we need a motion?
You don't need a motion, it sounds like.
It's gonna be a motion to.
Approve the letter, yes, but.
But it sounds like there's no objection to us drafting the letter.
Not to draft a letter, I don't think so, Ray.
I didn't wanna make a motion, because I'm on the museum committee too.
Everyone was shaking their heads, yes, I saw.
Yes.
Yeah, that's that's fine, so Miles, do you wanna do that and then?
We got that.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting and we'll discuss it then and.
We will try to do that, and if you get me a template, that will help us move faster.
Yeah, absolutely, um but yeah, I'm glad to field any questions, if anyone else has any questions, glad to, yes, sir.
This is the first time I've seen that, it looks really nice and uh one thing I think it's missing personally is like a dumb kids playground. And I wonder if you've ever thought to that, and then another question that I'd like to ask is, are you looking? Or have you made any sort of like revenue projections of like funding once the building is built and what that might look like?
What do you mean, revenue projections?
Um money coming into the museum.
How we're gonna continue to fund it, yep, I can answer both those, uh we'll take the first one, can you, I guess, scroll down?
Yeah.
Uh on the same picture, same picture, I just wanna see the top side of it, uh let me see, maybe go to the overhead view.
You have another image, this one.
Go to the overhead view, okay, zoom in on that memorial garden right there.
This one?
Uh up at the top, it says memorial right there, so oop, oop.
I know, I'm going, I got you.
Right here, up just a little bit, okay, so um this is kinda laid out. We're we're kinda going off the uh original foundation of from the pictures that you sent me, the the um.
Those drum cool roads.
The drum, yeah, so we're going based off of this, what this whole thing is right here is is the exist, is the the foundation, but it includes like. Uh the gym that they added when they redid the James Cousins, when they rebuilt it. So it's not gonna all be that, it's gonna be more about half of this, this is gonna be like a memorial garden, our plan is to make that an area where kids can play, there's probably not gonna be a lot of. Play stuff in there, but because children died there, because of the severity of the event, we want that to be sort of a memorial. Uh area where they can be, there's gonna be seats, they can feel free to do whatever, maybe it'll be games or something, but that's just gonna be like a grassy area, maybe some sort of hedge. Around it or whatever, uh as far as other playground equipment, I don't think we've gotten that far yet. We wanna see how it looks there before we really get, we s- before we start putting other things there, this is gonna be some sort of reflection pool. That will draw attention as well, uh one of the other things that will um draw people there is with safe routes to school. We have the uh storyboards that we put up in the park, they're very temporary right now. Uh eventually, we'll be able to make them a more permanent fixture, so those will go around there and working with the safe routes to school program. We'll be able to use it for museum related stuff or um. Uh school related stuff and and that'll be one way that we have interactive stuff outside, but playground equipment, I don't see that yet. And we really have to, we have to get to that point, I don't think we're at that point yet, we we like, we wanna make sure it's open. That's that's what's important to us, is having a nice open green area, um so we can have events, special events there.
I think I have some kind of even more engagement too, it seems like that's what you're thinking.
Okay, engagement? Okay, engagement, yup, absolutely. So the reflection pool, um, the, and cause we thought about that too, is how can we engage? How are we gonna get them there? Getting them there in the museum, but how can we get them outside now? And so part of our plan of getting people outside with our, that's why we, we really wanted to incorporate the gazebo that's there. Get sidewalks there so people can roll, walk, or ride out there, uh, to incorporate that. That's been there, uh, what, early, mid eighties anyways? So we wanted to really incorporate that in there.
That reflecting pool is in the exact spot where the couple was, wasn't it, isn't it?
Yes.
It's got good non-motorized access. It should make this a much more walkable area and kinda bridge this dead space that currently exists between.
The architect had suggested that, her thought being that, that couple has been there for a long time. And if you're taking that out of the park, it's nice to put something there back in its place.
Pool is a nice element because I, I see what you're saying, Commissioner, about, you know. But I think kinda in my view, like, I don't know, to use a millennial term, like the vibe of this place isn't necessarily like. You know, a tragedy happened, we're trying to reflect on that. We're trying to have this community space. So obviously when you're having these events or you're gonna be children, you wanna keep them entertained, but I think.
A goal of that memorial garden is that it is children friendly. And that's who we're memorializing and remembering are the children, for the most part, that died in the disaster. So it has to be, in my mind, a place that's kid friendly. And one thing that was also suggested was partnering with the public art committee. Or whomever, um, to plan what sort of installations might go in there. That can be memorializing and reflective, but yet still kid friendly, not necessarily a sad depressing way. But more of a, a remembering.
Yeah, and I just know like from the permitting side, you're gonna be placing this structure where one structure is right now. So it might be a little bit easier when, with a lot of this play equipment requires forty-eight inch footings. I just know from our sidewalk conversations with the state right now that, you know, trying to get footings in a site that's been designated. A historical site where now we're jumping through all these permits. So I, yeah, I would suggest trying to stay away from footings and anywhere that is a historical area.
Yeah, and yeah, that's, it's definitely not in like the major plan, but I see where you're going. Just engagement outside more or less, right? And yeah, that was important to us. Get people outside, get people to use it. Um, but yeah, that's. Uh, as far as uh, sustainability, so you saw that the master plan, the building plan. Uh, to get that thing up and running was, oh, it's one oh seven, I, or one oh eight, maybe? Uh, nope, like the mash, the, the budget. There we go. So you can see that our budget is four point two million dollars. We're setting our goal at five million. So what that does is that pays for that first couple of years, that extra money to, to, to sustain it. We, we thought ahead of this. But to continue sustainment of this, uh, we wanna have functions there, uh, fundraising events. It's gonna be easier to have these fundraising events and a, a newer uh, building. With some of these amenities without having to uh, worry about having them during the daytime. Or school hours or work necessarily around school events that, that do happen. So that, that would help us incorporate that a little bit.
Just a suggestion, just make sure whenever this does come for zoning review on the application, you put not just museum, but also event space. You run a couple Saturday weddings there at these wedding event places, I think you'll be fine.
We'll be fine. You know, and we're, we're, you know, like our, uh, the school folks that were here, uh, we don't know what it's gonna lead into. We certainly want this to be a community event. We want people to feel welcome there. You know, we have the, our winter festival that we've been doing the last couple of years. You know, that's gonna bring a bigger space. We're already exceeding our uh, capacity inside the church. Uh, so having a bigger facility or another facility, we'll have lights out there to help with that. The tree that we planted last year for that, it's safe, it's in a good spot. It won't be uh, it won't be uh, uh, moved or damaged. Uh, it's far enough away where it won't be uh, in the way, so. Um, yes, sir.
Have we thought about the farmer's market?
We have. Um, we have spoke with Adam a few times. Uh, go to the top. So, you can't see it, Charlie, oh yeah. So, like I said, this area is not gonna be this big. It's more like here or here. So what that's gonna do, uh, and you can see Walnut Row there. And, and you can see the sidewalk to sidewalk is gonna be in there somewhere. Uh, but it's gonna open up that whole northeast side, uh, to have people there. We're gonna have good parking there. People can park across the street. We got those nice crosswalks that are gonna be there. Uh, so yes, and, and. That was another reason why we liked having those bathrooms in there, incorporating them. Maybe we'll be open, maybe we won't as a museum, be open on those days, but it gives access to folks that are there. Uh, go to the farmer's market. Uh, anything else?
Well, we've got our homework, so I, from the staff side, I really appreciate you being here tonight and taking the time.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys taking the time to fit me in and, and listen and, um, just working with us. Um, a lot of, we have some, some good knowledge on our committee. But having helpful folks in the township to just show support and be as excited about this project as we are.
I can't remember if we talked about it. I remember Dean mentioned that when he was a kid going to that school, he was able to walk through and touch. The girl with, with cat. It's, yeah, I know where she's gonna be, but is she gonna be enclosed? I can't reme- it seems to me.
Probably enclosed. Uh, we found some sketches that uh, uh, show her with her tiled background. Um, that we're gonna try to replicate as best we can.
Yeah, that, that alcove.
The alcove, um, we're gonna do that. I foresee her being closed off. If you go, yeah, that one. If you go right here, can't really see, it's not great yet. I foresee her being closed off because I don't wanna, I don't want her fall over. Kids can be rambunctious, I guess, and, and stuff. So I foresee it being closed off, uh, to folks. But it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility.
I just saw that as maybe a, a opportunity, you know, if we allow people to touch it.
Sure. Uh, anything else? Thanks guys for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody got any more comments? There anybody from the public that would like to comment? Any residents? I see there's a couple of people here. No? Okay. We're gonna take a few minute recess. Anybody gotta take a piss break so Miles can help the Eagle people set up their renewable energy project?
Alright, thank you.
I don't get away from these people I gotta sit next to all night.
Thanks, Dwight.
So I'm gonna get up and leave in about five, two.
This is all about solar and wind. I don't know if, uh. Anything you might be interested in?
Just uh, appreciate everyone that came out tonight and thank those that do all the hard work behind, behind the scenes.
Hate to see her go in some ways. It's a great opportunity for her too.
Well, like him, you know, they, they work all day on their regular stuff and then.
Does anybody what?
Hate to tell Matt he should hire her by all means.
Young children, I don't believe so. There's like a middle school age book. But younger than that, I don't.
Matt, the welding, he does a lot of MDO work, a lot of property acquisitions, a lot of planning for MDO. Designing things to fit within.
I'll get right on it.
It'd be a good experience for her. I'm sure she won't stay very long, but she might stay a couple of years, but I don't think she'll stay more. I'd be surprised if she does.
Is she gonna actually do that?
Yeah, she's gonna go work.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, the iron. I don't know when she actually starts. I think July, I think she starts in June or something like that.
Good thing you're used to running.
I know, you know me.
That's the military for you.
So you didn't have a backpack on?
I feel like empty. How about my lab class?
What are you gonna hide behind?
That's how I feel. I'm gonna have to break something up.
It could, it could be a while, yes. Okay, we timed our presentation to be forty minutes, exactly.
This is gonna be interesting.
Good evening, now, he just left.
How you doing, George?
I'm good, baby.
Excellent. Use your influence and get that nipple growed and created.
How about yourself?
I'm fired. I can't take you no more. Looking at the blades visually, I wanna see if I need to replace the towers or whatever. We can come this way, we're like. She's going around the other way. He was trying to step in front of you. It's real lucky. Yeah, that's true.
Are you ready? Talking pony.
This was not as long for y'all. Did you say something about a pony?
You want, you want a pony?
Are you? Interesting.
Uh, I did.
Oh, you did?
I lost like that much.
I got caught in a wheel. I was laying on my back. And I got caught in the wheel.
Can you imagine? You, you just had scissors on, yes?
I had to, yeah.
But you just happened to have scissors or did you ask somebody to find scissors?
Yeah, I already asked.
That was, I was.
Thank you for your thoughtful.
I was surprised how long it took me to cut through it.
Hopefully it goes well.
I'll have to do something, but I'm sure.
You still got a good. Nice.
See you, Chris.
Where is that? Where are you gonna?
Downtown Detroit.
Downtown Detroit, oh.
Everybody knows who, Matt.
Well, I'll do a lot of stuff between the two as well. Like I went to the STEAM event on Friday for back elementary.
So you're the bike wander?
Yes. There was a fish opera. Never watched fish opera before. And then the kids had to go fishing for fractions. That was.
Excellent. I went, I went and saw Moulin Rouge. Yup, that was fantastic. Right up on the grand tier, sitting right in the middle.
Oh, it's the best spot.
Oh yeah, I love that spot.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Baker would like to make a few comments before he has to leave at eight o'clock.
Oh, that's right. I, I have to leave early and we usually have uh, um, commissioner comments at the end of the day, or at the end of the meeting. And I just wanted to thank, we had a lot of people come out today. I just wanted to thank everybody that came out, um, for open meetings. And then also thank uh, uh, the planning commissioner and those behind the scenes that do the work every week for us. And usually I say that at the end of the meeting, but I greatly appreciate our township. And all the work that gets done behind the house that we don't see from the uh, assessor's office to those that answer the phones every day. It's greatly appreciated by me. And also, uh, for those families, we're gonna miss the Memorial Day. That's the twenty-seventh, I believe. Is that May? May, yeah, so late May. I'll comment on that later then. So thank you to all those that work behind the scenes.
Thank you, George. Bye, George.
I won't hang for five more minutes, catch what I can.
Okay, so if you folks wanna start, you're willing to go.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
So, hi everyone, good to be back. Hello. Um, my name is Zona Martin again, and you met Ying Chen Wong last week. But we're also now joined with our final REA team member, Ian O'Leary.
Nice to be here.
Again, just as a refresher into the new people here, um, we're departmental analysts at Eagle and Eagles Energy Services Unit. Um, and we're here piloting the Renewable Energy Academy's Technical Assistance Program. Last week, we kinda just did some basic introductions, um, and kinda introduced the role of the Renewable Energy Academy. As a neutral source of information for proactive planning with just a really core focus on community engagement. Um, we are piloting new educational, um, and planning advice. Um, as it relates to, um, the new citing legislation and to kind of prepare townships. Um, for the new permitting landscape that comes around, um, in November. Uh, due to PA two thirty-three, a new citing law. We covered energy basics and renewable, um, frequently asked questions. Uh, it was a lot. So thank you for bearing with us for two hours. Um, this session will not be as long. We timed it, it'll be about forty minutes. Um, and just as a refresher, um, we are covering utility scale renewable energy. So that's grid connected projects, um, and large scale principal use, um, projects. So that's, as a definition, comes out to be utility scale. And we're covering wind, solar, and storage utility scale. Um, and we are just trying to be here to stress that township should begin covering, uh, these. And having these conversations around planning for these types of projects. Um, yeah, oh, also, y'all had a lot of questions from last week or last session that we didn't really get to. Um, and we promised that we would have those questions ready and answered today. But we actually decided that it might be better to kind of compile all of y'all's questions throughout the sessions. And then kind of give you a handout at the very end as a kind of a final deliverable, um, that you can have. It gives us a little bit more time to prepare everything and make sure it's all accurate and sourced correctly, so. Um, y'all have that at the very end of session three or like, you know, maybe when we meet final with Miles. So today's session is called land, uh, land use inventories and resource potential. And we're trying, we're mainly, um, giving some perspective on how renewables, um, might actually fit in your township. And prompt some conversations around. on how renewables, um, might actually fit in your township and prompt some conversations around farmland preservation and, you know, different township goals that you have and how renewables could potentially fit in that. Um, we're going to get first into Bath Township's actual wind and solar energy potential, uh, based on an analysis that Ying Chen conducted and we'll go through, um, in detail, and then Ian will get into the topic of farmland preservation, um, kind of as a theory, uh, followed by Bath's, uh, statistics and land use inventory. Um, and then rather than breaks for Q and A's like last time, we're going to instead have some discussion sections following different, um, topics. And, um, we'll just basically prompt y'all to consider different angles, um, or offer up new ones that maybe we haven't considered. And, yeah, everything, I just wanna stress, everything is food for thought, um, there's no right and wrong conclusion that we're pushing with this. We're just trying to, you know, spark some conversations and we definitely encourage you to consider each question that we prompt or discussion that we prompt, um, from multiple perspectives and providing your insights about the township. So, yeah. Ying Chen can kick it off.
Yeah, so the next part, we'll cover how Bath Township look like, um, with the wind and solar resource. So, as we've mentioned in session one, but we can look at this map, two maps again. So we can see the solar and wind potential in Michigan, but when thinking about renewable energy development, there's much more other factors to think about rather than just how sunny or windy Michigan is. Some other factors could be, think of like distance to substations, slope, or land cover type. So, there are several existing resource to, uh, resource that include those considerations like Energy Zones Mapping Tool and Geospatial Energy Mapper, but these are all national scale models that loses a lot of resolution when you look at them very closely at a certain location. For example, when we're zooming out, zooming in to Bath Township, all, uh, the resolution looks really bad. So, as you can see on the, um, bottom left corner, those large national map look at such a big picture that makes places like Michigan looks, appear to be in a similar same color. That's why we made our own model and removes the direct solar strands and instead emphasize on the land use, population density, and other factors. So this is the model we made, we built using ArcGIS, referencing the Geospatial Energy Mapper you just see, but with more focus on the local considerations under Michigan's unique rural landscape. So, also building this model for our own allows for further analysis that we can change the priorities and add some areas of exclusion easily, like we can overlay, uh, the protective land as a layer on top of this map. So here, we've listed all the components we used for each model in these two, two tables. So we modified the components and weight for each of them based on what we've seen in renewable energy field and based on what we have talked, we have talked with different stakeholders. So for the solar model, we used slope, land use type, population density, and distance to, and distance to substations as parameters with different weights. We highlighted two factors here, so first, uh, we put land use type as the most important parameters for this model because for Michigan, uh, the best developer will land is the agricultural land, and that's where the developer would go for it. And the other point, um, as you can see here, we eliminate the consideration for solar potential because Michigan has a pretty uniform solar potential throughout the whole state. And on the table on the right, we, for the wind model, we used distance to major roads, land use type, population density, uh, wind speed, and also distance to substations as parameters with different weights. And as for wind development, unlike solar, the wind speed is actually, uh, the most important thing to think about. And secondly, we increased the weight for population density, uh, from the original model to reflect more considerations on the city and rural boundary. Um, yeah, also, as you can see, it was less for the solar development because wind has more visual impact. So we addressed that through the population density factor. And this flow chart shows how we developed that model. So taking solar here as an example, before giving all the weights to each parameter, each of the parameter actually has some component with different suitability score. So, on the right here, we put the score for different land use type as example here. We significantly altered the score for different land use type to emphasize more realistic, more realistic sites. For example, we set all forest categories to zero because it is very rare to clear cutting for renewable energy in Michigan. And this model, after that, we took more objective categories like slope, substations, and population density and fed those in while with different, uh, weights. And after all those pre-data cleaning process was done, we used the suitability modeler in ArcGIS to build the two solar and wind model. And now, let's have a closer look at Bath Township. Starting with solar, looking at this map, uh, the greener, the more suitable, the redder, the less suitable. One thing, one thing to notice is that, uh, red does not mean it's completely undevelopable, undevelopable, but rather unfavorable for development compared with other areas in Michigan. And similar to the green, it, the green area does not guarantee development. So, here's our first discussion, so looking at this map, what areas stand out to you?
I was just, I was gonna ask a question, page seven and page nine, also, there's no color index, so when it showed the maps, I didn't understand what the colors meant.
Green is good, red is bad.
So that, that same index would work on the other two maps?
Yeah.
That four two five section sure does look nice where that side farm is.
Where's the four two five section?
That's that, that's that big black dark green spot. I've always said, man, that should be just covered with solar panels. Sorry.
Can you put your cursor where we are, just to help?
Yeah.
The link is right there.
Here, I can, I can do it.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'm on this screen here where my little cursor's moving.
We can't see it though.
I'm gonna zoom in.
Okay.
Okay, so we are approximately like right here.
Okay.
There's not like a road grid to really help us out, we're kinda central right there.
Yeah, that was my one thought when looking at this map earlier is it would be helpful even just a few major roads, even just the highway through there to help people orient, 'cause I know approximately, but now if I'm trying to look at specific locations, it makes it a little bit.
Was this a raster data file that you used to make this?
Uh, the original one was, was all raster.
Yeah.
But the map you're looking at right now.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all raster.
Am I just looking at GISing, but sometimes like when those, you have these raster data sets, it's hard to layer.
To layer stuff.
Then you have to convert them, flat, flatten the image.
Yeah, but, yeah, we can definitely add like some major roads on top of this for future.
That'd be good.
I mean, you can kinda see where they are, 'cause obviously you know, solar panels or vegetation or whatever on the roads, but just a couple landmarks to help people zoom in a little bit.
And the four twenty-five helps too.
That big incident, what we refer to as the four twenty-five is that square down there. That East Lansing took that for.
Do you ever look at the border, is it just the four twenty-five?
The side farm. This, everyone calls it the side farm around here.
We don't like it.
The only, the only issue with establishing somewhere there, 'cause me and Beth were kinda talking about that, is it's all set on the whole muck. So the footings for that are gonna be, you know, the, the sore, they're heavy.
Yeah, but you could, you could float them, it's drained well now.
Yeah, that's true, you could float the footings.
So other than the four twenty-five, big green, this is, this patch also drew our com, like, um, focus, especially due to its neighboring large patches to the Duett Township. And next, we'll zoom out to the whole county, so Bath Township is right here.
Sorry if this is small.
Yeah, and the red dots here, it's the high voltage substation.
Oh, those are the substations.
Yeah, those are the substations, and now to our next discussion. Also, what pattern do you see? And second, does having high potential neighbors impact Bath's own renewable like good? And the third question is, would co-hosting a portion of wind, solar, or storage with townships like Duett or Victor be of interest?
I could probably get the ball rolling with like a, a pattern that I'm seeing, and you guys can correct me if it doesn't align with your experience. I'm looking at this and I see all of these other townships that are so much greener than that. And I'm wondering, 'cause I don't know the answer to this question, if, uh, developments are finding homes in other townships and are like these big really suitable areas, would that maybe encourage developers all towards those areas and reduce the, uh, the proposals to Bath? Or alternatively, if those sites are occupied, would it maybe bring out certain niche developers who are looking for these tiny little pocket opportunities with really well-equipped planning commissions or, or, uh, planning zone passing?
I don't know, I almost wonder, maybe Dwight, maybe you could offer more county level perspective, but it almost feels to me that the more, um, high potential sites are the less interest by residents or less desire, I might say a little bit.
Yeah.
What I see in Bath Township, the reason for that severe lack of green is by the, 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 uh, base of your data, you know, I mean, what, what you see there is basically wooded area and wet, and wetland. And that's what Bath is made up of, so.
Yeah, it's a wet place.
And it's, it's actually good to know what's in that four twenty-five because then you can visualize, okay, why is that so good and why is this not so good? So, that's, and the, the farther north you go in Clinton County, that's farmland, you know, it's agricultural land that's been cleared.
Well, one pattern that I talk to these guys about, I'll pull up my screen again, is this area here. So our thing that we're trying to think about is like, what's our realistic risk profile? I'm gonna use the word risk here a lot, not that's necessarily a bad thing, but what is our, what is the likelihood that we could see something like this? I think the scenario that I could see is, even though some of the northern county is more green, the residents that this power generation would like to serve are to, I mean, there's obviously a pocket in St. John's, but largely it's south, right? Lansing, East Lansing, so, uh, you know, there's a cost profile here for the people establishing us to get this energy south, so they have to establish that network. It, it's cost prohibitive to do long distance transfer of energy, so they wanna shorten that distance. So I think we do have a slight risk profile in this corridor here, just because on the Duett Township side, they have so much in Victor Township to the north, that would put the power generation in this pocket where it's developable, but also close to people.
And that substation in Southern Duett, I think is a very big deal, uh, I, I think that's a very significant, as you said, kind of corridor.
Yeah, well, centrally located.
Miles, is the, Mike, Mike gonna pick up his conversation?
What's that?
Is the Mike gonna pick up the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you're doing extensive talking, it might be good to stand. 'Cause you're definitely not, we're not getting you on video right now.
Okay.
So with this, the, again, the Duett, Bath Township, but that substation is so far south, is, that distance is, what, about twenty miles?
From where?
From the green spot in Bath and Duett.
So, one thing that can be a good, um, indicator is townships are six miles by six mile squares. So from that, I'm just eyeballing it, probably is about five miles.
Five miles?
Yep.
Which is not bad at all.
Transmission lines.
It's not bad, and because of the density here, we already have a lot of three-phase power transmission lines throughout the township. So they'll tap into that and then send it south, but like if you were to develop up there in like, um, uh, Olive or Riley Township or, uh, Bengal, you know, you're gonna be building that out.
They're also in the, um, planning commission websites.
Now we got you mixed up.
By the way, the county has done a lot of hard work on this and we will definitely be, uh, copying some of their homework, so appreciate them on that.
Uh, moving on to the wind model, also similar, the winner, yeah.
Thank you for asking, I think that there is a lot of fear and concern that solar is not, uh, so welcome in northern part of the county. But also, I haven't really gotten like a clear projection as to like how much solar, how many acres you're expecting, 'cause I could really have.
We'll show you that, just a couple slides.
Continue on this wind map, also the greener, the more suitable, the redder, the less suitable. What areas stand out to you?
Same neighborhood.
Yeah. You'll see the same, top left, uh, top left, green patch. And also, the scattered green patches here in the middle, 'cause for, especially for wind project, the turbine can be scattered into different, like, parcels, they don't, they do not need to be all together at once. And the county map again.
There's that same overlap with Bath and Duett again, but for wind as well, and then it would be like, we could see like a bigger wind development in Duett, but then Bath just kind of like having a portion of their wind farm.
And I think another nuance here is, I, we'll show it a little bit in a second, but with wind and solar side by side, so we can start to see the difference between the two, largely that the greens here get greener and the reds here get redder, and you can start to see like, the major roads are just kinda these like scars between them because they, uh, it, it has a, uh, higher population density weight, so it's trying to say, wind, residents typically just further away from population density, so we want to push it out of the more developed areas, so that's how those two compare.
Yeah, that's why the city area is much redder compared to the solar. Yeah, like, uh, you just mentioned, uh, Bath Township has a lot of, uh, wetland resource, so we added, um, this DNR land, wetland layer on top of the model we made. So as you can see, it eat up some part of the, the green area, but not all of those. And this map is also just showing us, there's also a lot of other additional restrictions, restrictions that need to think of, like, Bath Township has an airport, I know it's on the top left corner, that can be, think of as like adding with, uh, extra setbacks to the airport that can block some of the development. So, yeah, this is just an example of some additional restrictions here.
And, yeah. Does the DNR have a policy on wind and solar? I mean, it seems like it might not be a bad area for wind.
I could, oh, you can probably better answer. Oh, okay, yeah, it looked like you were, uh, this meeting, but.
You, you, in my opinion, I, uh, would think that you wanna, you wanna keep that green space as green as possible, the DNR land. They wanna, they wanna keep it pristine, they wanna keep it untouched by humans, so that, that's what that's for, it's for preservation.
We talked about this in our session a little bit. I agree, and we talked about that, but I do know that in some portion of that DNR space, they lease for farming.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's necessarily out of the realm of possibility that they would lease for this.
I agree.
But, you know, we've seen the state, uh, do a lot of those, uh, energy chargers now in state parks. So I think they're looking for creative options to get this online, because they have this lofty goal of, you know, whatever it is, sixty percent by twenty thirty.
Especially with wind, wind doesn't seem that invasive. To have one wind turbine in these fields that they're already farming, or it's trails, or deer hunting, or whatever. I don't know, it seemed like.
Of ease, because, excuse me, I didn't mean it right.
No.
Because it's already owned by the state.
But I didn't know if they had a specific policy.
That was a good question.
They do have a specific policy, it's called, uh, Justice Forty. So there's a federal guideline for how much they want to transition, uh, state and federally owned and protected lands to other uses, usually on the perimeter. And so the way that they model it is, they say like, we're trying to increase our perimeter for this park by two percent this year, or trying to decrease it. They basically like to offload acres when they can, if it's no longer within the permit of the project or of the protected, like, ideology there. So, as you say, sometimes they sell that land outright, sometimes they lease it. If it gets sold or leased, then it becomes in the purview of whoever is now, uh, taking care of that land. But the DNR themselves wouldn't probably make the decision on whether to host it. They pass it, pass the buck to someone. But, yeah, it does happen for renewables, but I think very rarely, if I have to guess.
So this slide will stress, uh, address your questions before. So here we wanna show you how would an existing project look like if we just put it on Bath Township's map. So here we placed a boundary of a hundred megawatts midwestern solar park, uh, in Illinois, over top, uh, on the patch that is suitable in Bath. So as you can see here, the pink boundary, it's the solar panel boundary. It's just a panel, which takes, uh, five hundred and seventy-five acres, while the actual footprint of the whole solar farm might be up to a hundred acres. But this is a very arbitrary, arbitrary placement, but it just, we just wanna give you an idea of how big a one hundred project would look like. And we did the same for wind. We picked, um, a similar, a hundred megawatts, uh, Michigan wind park, the Apple Blossom from Huron County, and just take, uh, their twenty-nine turbines, just move it on top of Bath Township's map. So in, within the boundary of the pink, uh, line, there are twenty-nine turbines in this project. And with the current arrangement, there are, there are roughly ten turbines that fall in Bath Township's boundary. So this is, um, just a scenario of, of a wind project that is co-hosted, co-hosted by Duett and Bath Township.
Possibilities.
Yes.
And y'all wanna emphasize the disclaimer, or how arbitrary this was? We took the boundary, we saw green, we popped it up.
Yeah.
We're not trying to point out parcels and say like, oh, you guys look juicy. We just wanna show you how big this is.
Yeah.
Right? So that's, that's an important intention here. And then also, that's a, I, I'm sorry if you didn't say this, it's a pretty small wind project. They're typically not twice as big, they typically sprawl between more townships. And as we pointed out earlier, they can take over a huge sprawl if they're all connected, you know, one turbine here, one here, one here, between, uh, pretty disparate parcels, assuming that the transmission is there to support it. So thi- this is a pretty condensed, pretty small wind project.
Yeah, I think the wind project we toured, when me and Beth went there in twenty twenty-two, was across three municipalities.
Yeah.
We used the hundred to try to like compare, so in our later slides, we showed how municipality would get revenue from those projects. So we used the same amount of megawatts for renewable projects to give you a comparison to look at the difference of revenues between solar and wind and storage, uh, projects.
Which I will now discuss. So I did some just really quick, like, back of the napkin math on how much a municipality will see in revenue from hosting projects of the size that we just presented. So let me go through each of these little points that I have here. I just wanted to walk through the methodically release, so you know what I'm actually calculating. Um, because calculating municipal revenues for renewables is not an exact science. There's a lot of guesswork and estimation involved. First and foremost, one of the things we'll talk about is the RRCA. If you recall, that is an Eagle grant that gives upfront cash. Our team designed it and currently administers it. Uh, it's five thousand dollars per megawatt to the municipality who hosts or permits. Secondly, for solar, if we're assuming a lifespan of twenty years, and seven thousand dollars currently in taxes or payment in lieu of taxes, this is how it's done for solar, then that will give us our property tax value. For wind, it's a pretty big, big asterisk here. Twenty nineteen developer article says each turbine, over its full lifetime, yields about five hundred thousand in property taxes. This tax table has changed often and has really influenced some townships and developers alike. So there's a big asterisk there, because that dollar sign can change significantly and has. However, I wanna emphasize that this is just the municipal revenue. Landowner leases are not considered here. So that's an agreement between the landowner and a developer to host the renewable energy, which will, uh, give money directly to the landowner. And additional revenue streams that are kind of like more under the table, like community benefits agreements and, uh, participation agreements to good neighbors, et cetera, are also not applicable here. So, oh, yeah.
How does that factor in current revenue that would be coming to the municipality from whatever source that would be? I would assume it'd be agriculture? Or does that, does that change? I, I don't totally understand where this, where does all this money come from?
So this money is paid for directly out of the developer's pocket. Um, ever, other than the RRCA, which is the Eagle grant, the property tax values, the pay, payment in lieu of taxes, the community benefits agreements, the ma- good neighbor agreements offered by the developer.
So these are just taxes that are just?
Industrial versus property taxes.
Which is taxed at a much higher rate than ag.
Yes.
Okay.
Ag is taxed at probably one, one of the, because we all want to eat, it's very low, yeah.
Right.
If Steve was here, he'd be having a field day right now.
And we're assuming, of course, that in this, in this arrangement, a landowner wants it and has leased the land for it. Therefore, the municipality, what income can you expect from one of your landowners deciding to host this? Two separate conversations with different dollars.
So our job is sort of the go-between, between the landowner, who we assume wants this, and the municipality who can benefit from it as well.
Yeah.
And the developer who's trying to make it happen for everybody. How does the developer end up making money?
They sell renewable energy.
They sell power.
And they sell renewable energy credits, and both of those are incredibly lucrative, especially for wind. So they pay all of this stuff, and you still see the amount of development that you do in Michigan. It's, it's a profitable game for them for sure. So.
And you pay for this in your utility bill?
You do, yeah. So, uh, I, we're, I'm sorry, I wasn't here in last session, were you here for the prior session?
Yes, I was.
So you saw some of our, like, theory about the utility grid and the way it impacts bills. Generally speaking, since renewables introduce unreliability into the grid, there are gonna have to be cost increases as storage balances it out, as other peaking plants like natural gas and whatnot have to balance out that unreliability. But the general principle is that because Michigan has a renewable portfolio standard, the grid is gonna be composed of sixty percent renewables, period. Assuming that nothing changes. If that doesn't change, then that, those effects to the grid are gonna take place no matter what. So the thing that municipalities is starting to, are, are starting to explore is, if these grid effects are gonna reach us regardless, should we try to capture the benefits? Or should we maintain our current operations, our agricultural operations and our typical land uses, and try to be a little bit more protective of our traditional land uses as opposed to renewables?
And so as the individual consumer, the only way you benefit is by leasing the renewable? Otherwise, you're probably not gonna notice a difference in your.
Unless.
Other than just the ultimate source of the energy generation.
Right, right. Other than the, uh, improvements to the municipality through the property taxes as well, which can affect some, can't affect some, depending on the location.
That would probably be more indirect.
Exactly, for sure. Uh, if there is a renewable plant in your township and you're not hosting it, you're just a landowner, then you're probably not gonna notice anything different, other than the turbine that you can see, presumably.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so let's look at what that number would actually be. Again, pretty back of the napkin. For the solar example, hundred megawatts through the RRCA, this yields five hundred thousand dollars in upfront cash. And then the property taxes over the twenty-year lifetime are fourteen million. Again, that's seven thousand dollars per megawatt for twenty years. So in total, a hundred megawatt farm, which is that size that you saw earlier, would input seven hundred thousand in property taxes per year. And then there would be the five hundred thousand out there. For wind, in our example, Bath held ten of the twenty-nine turbines. That equates to about thirty megawatts. Through the RRCA, this means a hundred and fifty thousand upfront from Eagle, and then five million over the lifetime. Again, assuming five hundred thousand per turbine over the total lifetime, with seven, ten turbines there.
The lifetime of turbines is what?
What'd you say?
The general lifetime of a turbine?
They get repowered. So what happened, we haven't seen one just like get taken down and moved out, really. Because what happens is you just put new ones on.
I'd never seen one, you know, uh, a finite lifetime on them.
Exactly. The, the only time that that really happens is now, if the technology is, is advancing so much that the shorter ones, developers are going, let's get the shorter ones out, and let's put up taller ones on the same leases that they held. This then corresponds to a much higher lease and correspondingly a much higher, uh, property tax payment, because they go up in the tax table.
Right, okay.
Uh, and a thing I wanted to point out about wind and solar is that for wind, the landowner is making returns on both the farming that is still happening between the turbines, and we'll cover exactly how much that is, and the leases. For solar, pretty much just an income on the lease, because you can't grow crops on solar panels. Storage, really quick, we don't know a ton about its exact lease values. But looking at the RRCA, it also pays five thousand dollars per megawatt, but storage is pretty small. Thirteen megawatts can fit in one acre, as opposed to one megawatt of solar can fit in ten acres. So it's significantly smaller by an order of magnitude. So you can modularly add this on if there is a solar project in the conversation to increase the, uh, returns as a municipality. Okay, so with those numbers in mind, and with the general perspective of what Bath looks like on the renewable map, I wanna talk about farmland preservation, because that's kind of the main conversation about renewables right now in Michigan. So I'm gonna cover the general theory of it, and then we'll map it to, uh, how Bath is actually, uh, utilizing land. So first I wanted to pull up the master plan and just, uh, get us on the same page of the environmental protection and preservation goal, which in itself has an action item of protecting prime farmland in the township. So we went in and just wanted to make sure that this was a priority for Bath and some leadership reform before we explored it further. So, good to see. So, uh, farmland preservation is inherently connected to utility scale renewables, because the necessary setting conditions for renewables are all found in agricultural land. It's flat, it's near roads, presumably near substations, and there's not a lot of buildings in your life. So this has become a very high priority concern about renewable energy in Michigan. Uh, people are very concerned about farmland declining in favor of renewable energy. Um, an additional conversation that happens around that is how that impacts the food supply as well. This might not be a major concern for Bath, I'm not presuming that it is. I'm assuming that most townships have this in mind. But let's explain the general theory first behind it and renewable energy as it pertains to it, and then talk about it. So, uh, I've sort of bracketed strategies of farmland preservation as such. One route is maintaining acreage. So this is keeping farmland physically available and ensuring that other developments do not replace the farmland. This is typically done by planning and zoning. The second route is increasing the profitability of the farming operation. So assume that acreage is staying the same. If a given farm is making more money, or they're being more productive with more equipment and techniques, then that would lead to that farm being able to maintain its operation over time. Similarly to differently, the third topic of ensuring a legacy of the farming operation. I think this is more of a focus on farmers and not the farms themselves. Uh, a big conversation in Michigan right now is how population trends for farmers is looking. Uh, a lot of townships are concerned that their, uh, farming population is starting to age out, and that there's not a generation that is ready to inherit and continue farming the land. So, uh, a valid route of farmland preservation is ensuring that there are succession plans and safety nets for those farming operations in place. So next, I took a stab at mapping those three farmland preservation techniques to the three renewable technologies we're talking about. Again, I'm a total amateur when it comes to farming, so this is just me kind of thinking about it from, you know, my office in Ann Arbor. But let's start with solar. In the route of maintaining acreage, I think solar is a negative. I think that it directly reduces crops grown. Um, you can't farm that. So if the, if a priority of farmland preservation is maintaining acreage, this is not compatible with that. However, if a route is increasing the profitability of a given farming operation, then a farmer can increase their revenue by, uh, reducing the operational costs on some of their land and putting solar on, uh, the parcels that remain. Therefore, they're getting returns on the lease and are able to focus their efforts elsewhere. For the question of ensuring legacy, this is kind of the main question about solar right now. Is putting solar on farmland a form of time-capsuling it against development and keeping it, uh, a cleared piece of land that's giving a return to a farming operation? Or is it not? Is solar on land still farming? That's kind of the question of the hour and what we've been trying to explore on this topic, so I have no idea. For wind, maintaining acreage, I consider this to be compatible. One acre per turbine is cleared physically and can't host crops. The remainder of the footprint can't host crops. Additionally, wind kind of like puts a perimeter around the rural boundary, um, and prevents development as the farmland, let's say there's two turbines and a, and a plot of farmland in between it. That farmland is now, uh, making pretty significant returns on the leases, and therefore it's likely to stay in business. And due to the setbacks of the wind and the visual impacts of the wind, it's unlikely that development would start to encourage towards those surveys. For profits, this is a double plus for wind. It, you maintain farming revenue mostly, other than the cleared acreage, and you still get very high leases on the wind turbines. Again, that's just from a landowner or farmer perspective. The missing thing here is how it affects the rest of the community and the neighboring impacts. I'm not ignoring those, I'm just talking about from a farmer perspective here. Finally, wind, as we covered before briefly, uh, is a safety net. It, similar to the principles before, puts a lot of money into the farmer's hand to do with as they will for their operation. Storage, I'll quickly skip through it. We don't really know its acreage footprint particularly when it stands alone. It's typically always paired with wind or solar, so it's kind of a different relationship there. And then both of these points are similar. Storage presents a really high dollars per acreage, depending on the lease and, but depending on the RRCA grant as well, for a pretty low footprint ultimately. So, uh, I would like to ask for your input on what points here you disagree with or have comments on, or what perspectives did I miss? Similarly, as I said about local impacts for wind, that's a huge weakness that isn't captured here. It would make probably a double negative and make wind look pretty significant and be like local impacts and neighbor concern category. So what other weaknesses and strengths do you think are missing here? Or is any insights that came to mind?
Or none?
That's valid.
What is it?
I said, or none, that's valid as well.
No, you, you've hit just about every point, and you've hit just about every negative, and just about every positive. And, uh, you know, I, I could just see a time in the future when we place wind turbines, you know, semi, uh, equally through a given township such as Bath in a, in a, uh, a likely location as opposed to like a wind farm. There's none, you know, other than ten turbines, there's no place really in Bath to, to do a wind farm, like they did up by Ithaca or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I think I'd agree with that, for sure. Um, and I wanna bring, uh, to the conversation as well, just in case anyone missed the first session, with the new state signing legislation which activates in November. Basically, what it says is if a community has incompatible zoning ordinance for renewable energy, which is a, they have kind of a long list of zoning items that have to be met, um, then the developer and the landowner, if they have an arrangement, the developer. the developer can go right to the state public service commission and get the permit instead of through the local commission.
If it's over one hundred.
If it's a what?
If it's over the given threshold.
Yes, fifty for solar, hundred for wind. So that's what the next session is going to be about, is getting right into those details and seeing what all the pathways can be. I just wanted to bring that, just in case it was missing in the back of my head. Okay, so next, I want to go into the actual land use stats of Bath and Clinton County. I'm going to start with Clinton County virtually using the USDA census. I just pulled out some numbers that I thought were interesting here. I have two time series, twenty twelve to twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty two. Firstly, the value of agricultural products sold is a huge uptick, plus sixty percent in the last five years. The number of farms is increasing, but the size of farms is decreasing. This is actually kind of a good thing. This means that more operations are percolating and have more say in the general agricultural profile. Other townships are seeing, counties are seeing different trends in which bigger farms are consolidating more land and thereby reducing the opportunities they're stable. That's also reflected in the total producer count, which is going up in twenty two as well. Another rare stat, in my opinion, from what I've seen, another good indicator for Clinton. Net cash farm income just simply exploding. I don't even know what to make of that number. Plus two hundred and eighty-one percent over the last five years. That's tremendous. That's a huge data point. If anybody has insight into why it has just exploded over the last five years, I'd love to hear it, but.
Price of eggs.
What'd you say?
Price of eggs.
Price of eggs?
Yeah.
That's interesting, okay.
It's going up. Good time to be a farmer.
Wow, perfect. And speaking of which, Clinton County is the forty ninth county nationally in milk sales. It is the number two in Michigan as well. So there's clearly a dairy.
Coming after Wisconsin.
And then it's the eighth out of eighty-three Michigan counties in total agricultural sales. So I think the general trend here is that agriculture is moving like a county. Which isn't common leasing. I think most counties are seeing either a kind of leveling out or a bit of a decrease, so this is all really odds and ends.
Did it surprise you when you saw this?
Yeah, absolutely, because I ran this for another township as well and it was not similar. So looking at Bath specifically and knowing that it differs from the rest of Clinton, on the left are Bath's stats and on the right are the Michigan averages in that category. Bath is twenty-two thousand acres as opposed to the twenty-nine thousand average. Bath is about twenty-five percent agricultural as opposed to the thirty-three percent average. And seventy-four percent of that ag land is considered high quality, which is a, like, the American Farmland Trust has a value called productivity, versatility, resilience. Either way, it's just kind of an arbitrary threshold. The average in Michigan is eighty-seven percent. Now, calling out some specific acreage counts, and I'll get way more into these later. Four hundred and thirty-seven acres of grassland pasture idle cropland, which I'm flagging as a like solar development number one flag is what developers are going to see here. And fourteen hundred acres of lesser quality agriculture. Not calling it bad or less valuable, it's just the most likely to be developed first before the high quality land according to AFT. So, considering Clinton County's role as a strong agricultural producer, now is my turn to ask you, what is the, how high of a priority is farmland preservation in Bath? How often does this come up? How much do you think it pertains to renewable energy?
I think it comes up a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say it depends on who you ask.
Well, exactly. We have, we have a large development going literally next door on the forty acres over there.
What is it?
It's a manufacturing plant. Three hundred and, almost three hundred and sixty thousand square meters. And that was one of the concerns. They said they're getting rid of, it's a cornfield. And that was, you know, we had, we had three people come in and say something about that.
I assume the land was sold by the landowner to the developer?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so that's, yeah, we do have those kinds of distractions with this, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I think agriculture is important, but considering Bath Township compared to the rest of Clinton County, it's just, I think, one piece of the pie here. Obviously, most of that DNR land, that's a big chunk of Bath Township,
About thirty.
is not farmed.
Some of it.
Some of it, yeah. Not most of it, so.
Maybe ten percent of that dirt is farmed.
So, and then all the swamp land and, I don't know. I think that it's important, but not as important as it would be in other townships in the same county. I could be wrong on that, but.
I kind of, when they asked me that question on our preliminary meeting, I said, you know, one of our goals of the master plan is to maintain Bath's rural legacy. And I think John's answer is probably correct of it. Depends on who you ask.
Yep. Well, it's a dichotomy, you know.
We do.
You're having generations not want to farm. I mean, that's what's happening, you know.
Well, I think Bath Township's a dynamic place, because we have kind of two vested interests in the township. As, you know, we have this more suburban south and a more rural north. And those two, those two elements have very different incentives in life and very different needs out of what the government offers them, even the local government.
Is it out of procedure for me to ask the other attendees if they, I would love to hear from landowners or Clinton County if you guys have any insight into this as well, if you want to share. It's okay if that.
He's thinking.
I think it depends on who you ask.
Yeah.
Where you live is what the priority is.
So digging into that a little bit more, of those three buckets that I described earlier, maintaining acreage, just the flat number of farmland, increasing the efficiency of the farm as is, or ensuring that each farm has a succession plan. Which of those routes spoke to you the most? Which of those seem to be the most effective or the most often talked about?
When you, you said increase efficiency of farmland, that's kind of nebulous, because you're actually, you know, basically putting a factory that makes electricity on the farmland.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not really increasing the efficiency of the farm.
Oh, totally. I would say for increasing profitability, it's definitely a question.
Oh, very much so.
Yeah, you're right. For increasing efficiency, if we're talking, I would put that almost into the maintain acreage thing where it's like, if you're putting farm, if you're putting solar there, it's not farmland. So you're definitely not going to be increasing the efficiency of farming operation, so.
Do you know what the efficiency of a given solar farm or solar?
Yeah, so you mean like relative to the rest of the world?
In Michigan.
In Michigan, it is point one five. So, if, let's say you have a hundred megawatt farm, it is actually going to produce only fifteen percent of its nameplate, because the sun isn't good enough or it doesn't come off enough. The average nationally is probably like point three five.
So double what in Michigan?
Oh, yeah. Michigan's definitely really low on solar, very high on super lucrative wind.
I was really surprised. We have, we have more overcast days in Michigan than Seattle, Washington.
Yeah.
That's depressing.
I couldn't believe it. I was explaining so much.
I'm pretty sure Grand Rapids is ranked like the number one city without sun. Yeah, oh my, not kidding. That's like a real statistic.
Alaska is like part of their territory.
You go across the Mackinac Bridge and the sun goes away.
Yeah, and there's a huge solar farm just along the way.
I know, I just saw that.
Yeah, so like regardless of the capacity factor, the lucrative is there. Like it is profitable and with the renewable portfolio standard and with the coming legislation, it's likely that these proposals are going to start showing up. At the very least, conversations, developers want to explore their options. They're going to talk to everybody.
If I had to pick, I would say those first two. You put those right together.
Yeah, yeah. These are kind of a vet diagram. They're all pretty localized, yeah.
I feel like ensure legacy, that's one that I think is most about. People, when they, it kind of falls into two kind of camps, I think. One is the aesthetics. They don't, they find, they'd rather look at farmland than industry. And the other one is, we talked about legacy. We talked about it from the farmland perspective and I was hearing that's really about like the farmer's perspective. There's, you know, to have somebody cut into their profit, cut into their livelihood, and then it comes to that. And so, what I thought is sure legacy, we were talking about land, but I also saw that is from the farmers as well.
I totally agree with you, yeah. I, I think I mentioned it briefly, but to me, the third one is a focus on farmers and not farms. I totally agree. Okay, let me look at some more stats. So, this analysis, and this is our final one before we move into the closing discussions. This is a really comprehensive land use map of Bath Township. This looks like satellite data, and then wherever the satellites say something is farmland, they refer to the census to see what is, what is actually grown on that farmland. This map's pretty unreadable, so I broke it up in easier form. Firstly, you can see like all the gray. I mean, this is pretty analogous to the other maps we've been seeing today. So here I've isolated your top fifteen land uses by acreage in twenty twenty-three. Number one, Woody Wetlands, as we've been talking about, nine thousand acres. Only twenty-five percent of that comes second place, which is grass and pasture. That aligns as well with some of the trends we've been seeing. Deciduous forest, and then our developed categories and our agricultural categories start to broadly balance out. I'd say this is pretty standard, other than the huge Woody Wetlands presence.
It's a wetland.
And I've also just quickly pointed out some of the like highly, what developers are going to be looking at. These are the acreage counts that they're going to be saying, grass, pasture, corn, soybeans, alfalfa, wheat, ag, generally speaking. And then the sum of those acreages, so in total, just to call them out, fifty-six hundred acres is about the total acreage count that we're looking at as being one of potential.
What do you describe a herbaceous wetland as?
No idea.
I don't recall ever seeing that before.
Yeah, so that's the National Land Cover Database. That's the big like satellite nationwide profile of land use types. They read something and they say it's herbaceous.
I'm surprised winter wheat is that low. It seems like every other field I look at is winter wheat this year.
This is, oh, this year you said? Oh, interesting, because this is twenty twenty-three, so maybe it's off rotation.
They rotate.
Yes. Okay, and then from here, since this data isn't extremely useful in a vacuum, I went ahead and ran it for twenty twelve, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-three. So I really want to draw your attention to the final column, the change in acreage for a given land use type from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three, and I've ranked them highest of all. So the biggest transition that we've seen in the last six years in Bath is deciduous forest, decreasing by twenty-three hundred acres. In exchange, Woody Wetlands has increased by two thousand and fifty-four acres.
Almost the same.
I think that those are related. I think that one is converting to the other. So it's not necessarily a loss of the total land use. A next trend that I saw is a steady pasture decline. In twenty twelve, about five thousand, now down to about twenty-eight hundred, so roughly cut in half from pasture. Another trend, developed open space, which is like over a parking lot and like fields that don't have anything in them, is generally decreasing as medium development increases. I think those are also taking one another's place, which is a good sign. It means the development is staying within its zones and not necessarily encroaching. And almost all fallow land found use, starting in ninety-four acres, which is pretty high for twenty twelve, down to basically zero in twenty twenty-three. That's a very positive trend as well. That means that what is widely considered to be like the least desirable land use type, idle cropland, it should be crops or it should be something else. It's good to see that being converted. Probably to agriculture, seeing Clinton's trends. And then just some quick summaries, net trend of all the developed, all four of the developed categories put together, plus two hundred and seventy-nine acres over six years. The net trend of the crops that are shown here over six years, plus one hundred and eleven acres. So it's, that's good. Off the farmland, the development is remaining generally in place and kind of balancing out. So, all of this, I kind of just was reading the tea leaves, but you guys are the experts in Bath, obviously. So does this data make sense of any patterns that you've seen in the township? Or do you have any observations that make sense of these patterns?
The only, only really interesting one I see is the mixed forest is considerably up. And, and, you know, above it, grass pasture is considerably down. So I would think maybe they're just not, not putting livestock out to graze, you know, maybe that's it. I, I would be interested to see, and I don't even know if you get into this, but what is the transition of traditional family farming to away from farming? You know, what's the percentage of farms going, you know, to no longer be in a farm?
You can see that. So the USDA county census that I brought up, you can see it at the county level. For Bath, I don't think I could find those numbers, but that would be the perfect thing.
Yeah, it would be very interesting.
Be very interesting.
It's kind of sad, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. In good eye, I didn't notice the three hundred and ninety acre jump out of nowhere in mixed forests.
It's, it's a pretty strange one.
Yeah.
This chart based on Bath Township?
Yes, this is Bath Township.
Where did you come up with two acres of idle foul cropland?
So I simply, I took the shape file of like just the same thing that we've been like illustrating Bath with, and I put that into this CropScape tool. So this CropScape tool is very high level. It's like, you know, it's the whole United States.
Yeah, this is, this data, John, you gotta take with a grain of salt.
Total.
Yeah, I think so, because.
It's satellite imagery from the USDA.
How big is Cables Farm?
Yeah, it's, that's on, it's.
And they haven't farmed that in two years.
Roster data from a satellite, literally five thousand foot view.
Yep.
Okay, because there's about six hundred acres there that they haven't farmed in two years.
That's very interesting. So you, so you said six hundred acres of fallow land?
I'd say it's, ought to be at least four hundred, if not closer to five.
And sure, whenever I give some data like this to Bath, I just get like immersed, you know. Bath, no, like you, John, knows this township intimately better than some satellite imagery is ever going to be able to capture.
And that's what I was hoping to hear, so I'm glad. Your real observations obviously overpower these.
Yeah, that is wonderful, but only as good as its accuracy.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree.
It's swag, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And it's good to think about at the very least, now you know, like, keep an eye out for this, for that particular landowner when the developers come.
We don't have our PhD data station here.
I know, I wish. I was excited.
I think largely what it does show you is like the land cover and land uses change over time.
Yeah.
Regardless of if you're trying to create policies to make that change happen or not, change occurs.
Oh, yeah, it does. It's metamorphosis of the human race, I think.
Yeah.
And quote, you know, productivity and, you know.
Well, nature changes too, and I was just saying to Lexi, I mean, now when we do these land reviews, you'll notice detention and retention ponds are something that we think about every single time, every single development. But we have now, but we have whole neighborhoods where they were developed in Bath, you know. Hunter's Ridge is a good one. They're sending their water to their neighbors.
Yep.
There's not one retention pond.
We were talking about the Woody Wetlands, because it's like we just seem to create more wetlands and I was like, is Bath just getting wetter or not?
And the thing is, it actually is getting wetter, because all that water had to go somewhere.
It's great.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is a good thing for us to talk about, because obviously.
We don't need to get off on more.
Yeah, sorry. Long time.
It was, yeah. Um, yeah, so we're just gonna wrap up with the final discussion. A couple of final discussion questions. The first being just tying all of Bath's renewable energy potential and the land use inventories back to this theory of the relationship between renewables and farmland preservation. So given Bath's unique land use profile and renewable potential, if an energy-related transition were inevitable due to PA two thirty-three or a landowner's interest in leasing their land to a developer, what land use transition would be most and least desirable from your perspectives? There's farmland to solar, which would impact neighbors a little less because of, you know, the lesser visual impacts, but would also take up more acreage. There's farmland to wind, which would have more impacts to neighbors due to the increased visual impacts, but would emphasize host benefits due to the landowner payments and the ability to farm on it still. Or converting marginal or unused land, therefore reserving more agricultural acreage and resulting in smaller projects. I know with PA two thirty-three, I mean, how much you're able to regulate all of this is limited, but it's a fun thought experiment.
Well, I guess prima facie, I would say wind, you know, is the most.
Yeah.
I mean, it's infinitely more efficient use of land. Probably making, you know, consistent, round-the-clock energy. So, the downside is that they're three hundred feet high and
Yeah.
they move all the time, almost all the time.
Yeah, my pushback would be, well, what about the neighbors? What, they have to see those things all the time?
Depends on how you feel about it. Another upside though too, I think, is we talk about, I talked about this a lot in my more environment. in my more environmental planning days, which was, it can be manufactured in the US, or most solar panels are not manufactured in the US.
Oh, yeah, we're shipping millions of dollars to China.
I don't know if you know this or not, but very few, uh, turbines are made in the United States.
I know, but it's so unfortunate, because the Midwest can be perfectly tool to manufacture them here.
Oh, absolutely. You know, Europe was so far ahead of everybody.
Sure.
On, on wind turbines, that's why they, they beat out everybody.
Yeah, as far as solar, I think the only, um, US-made or like very small scale.
I kind of disagree with the idea that, that solar has less impact to the area than wind. Just in terms of, if you have a wind turbine, you can still walk through the field, you can still drive through the field, deer can still, animals can still run through the field. If it's solar, that's probably not gonna be the case.
Right.
Um, it's gonna be pretty much restricted access to anything else except just.
I think that is the argument they are making. I think you're agreeing with that.
So, yeah, I guess, um, my impact, I'm at visual impact of, uh, like when you're driving down a road and you see a solar farm versus wind, the visual impact of the wind turbines could arguably be more, um.
Maybe, I don't know, I guess I don't see wind turbines as that visually, that's maybe just my opinion. I was just at a track meet up in Breckenridge, which is near Ionia, and you sit in the stands and it's, you're within view of a dozen wind turbines in. I didn't find it.
It just blends.
Taking away from my experience, but a whole solar array probably would have, I would think it would change the feel of that. I think you can still have a rural feel with turbines.
Yeah.
And you lose that rural vibe, so to speak, with solar panels.
That's a really good point, and I think as these solar farms are getting larger, that impact is being seen a little bit more. I think right now, our opinions on visual impact is a little bit more tied to wind, just because that's what we see a lot more in Michigan, but now as these solar farms are popping up more.
And I think you might have adjusted it in the first one, but what is the wildlife impact for solar versus wind? I don't think it would be much for a wind turbine, but for solar, I feel like, where does that push the deer that used to hang out there? Where are they hanging out now?
Yes, and with that, I mean, you, the Planning Commission Wildlife Corridors, you could, um, potentially request a developer to ensure that there are some corridors, but, um, if not, yeah, there's those high fences, um, that legally, due to the electric code, have to be pretty high so that deer and animals can't get in. Um, so, yeah, that's definitely an impact.
It's short-circuit something.
The argument that you hear from wind, though, is always birds.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the wildlife impact to wind.
But you know, in this area, like MSU is super involved in like the migratory pattern of birds if there are wind fields, because like the environmentalists don't want that to get in the way of like building wind farms, you know? So there are like a lot of things around it, where solar, it's different, because it's more like on the ground where, um, wind is like in the sky, it's like.
Well, it's, it's a big fenced-off area.
Yeah, I just read an article that they're experimenting with painting one of the three blades black.
Yeah, we, we had that in our, um, last session, it was like a little small little note that we added. Um, I didn't know if, that was a European study that we cited, um, so I don't know if there's actually any, um, uh, cases of that here, but, I mean, totally could be done, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was, you know, significant, the less kill. I never, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I never thought there were that many birds being killed.
No, I don't think so.
In fact, I saw that article, and right below it, there was, they, they showed how many birds are killed by wind turbines, how many birds are killed by running into buildings, and, uh, it was, I mean, it was.
I liked you guys' graph last time, with the cats.
All the cats, and that's the worst.
Those alpha predators, man.
They're horrible for the ecosystem.
Don't ever let your cat outside, all of it.
They'll put, they'll put birds on your doorstep, all right.
Don't come in that opinion on the Facebook page, Ray.
So, we're already kind of talking about how like zone, like a planning commission could request some wildlife corridors if you're worried about that. But basically, um, you know, what conditions, uh, if communicated to the developer, would make renewables a more acceptable land use, um, in your opinion? And this will kind of lead into our session three as we talk more about zoning. So if more lenient conditions would lead to more revenue for the municipality, um, like at smaller setbacks, you know, which considerations would you give ground on? Or, um, on the other hand, if you don't care as much about the revenue, what items would you consider like non-negotiable, like, um, you have to have this amount of screening or these setbacks or this noise regulation, things like that? Are there any items that y'all are really kind of focusing on?
I'm a little confused there, because the state is going to have their rules, and if we are more restrict, those developers are gonna run around us and go to the state.
Yeah, so, um, we might be jumping the gun a little bit here, but basically, um, there are, you know, legally, the, the developer would have the right to, to go to the state, but there could be considerations that you could request, um, that, you know, would be, would be workable.
I'd like that request, but we're, we're standing out in the cold, um, and not going to have a voice in that decision. We could speak, but they don't have to listen.
You could, yeah, yeah, you could codify it into your plan, into your, um, ordinance, even if you wanted to. That would take you out of compliance, and that would be a risk that you would be having, like, willing to take.
So basically, the dance that like everybody in the space is having right now is, okay, developers are used to doing local permitting, and the state-siteing route is really timely cost, timely cost sensitive. This is gonna be session three mostly, the local procession.
Okay.
So the dance is, okay, this is so costly, why don't we just try going through the standard local procedures? We can work through the normal mechanism and never call the MPSC, assuming that there had been at least some like, uh, handshakes made between township and developer. It's really complicated and super up in air right now, we're gonna.
Yeah, no, no, you're good, that, that's basically it, um, yeah, so I guess keep in mind with that, like, with an understanding that you potentially might be able to, um, have more restrictive conditions than like say PA two thirty-three and still have a developer want to work with you, if it's, you know, reasonable. So we'll touch on that more, I just wanted to kind of get that in there, um, as we head into our next session. Um, that will be May fourteenth, um, it'll be planning and zoning pathway selection as it relates to PA two thirty-three. Uh, we'll be offering insight into the new legislation and basically explore the risks and opportunities uh, involved in each potential pathway, um, and we'll go through all those pathways that you have available. Sessions one and two have served as kind of a solid foundation of knowledge around how renewables could manifest in your township and what that entails, and we're hoping that session three will kind of build off of that and provide information on what a local government can do as it relates to regulating these projects, so. Thank you, that's all we have, so mu, thank you so much for your time. Um, as a reminder, we are a pilot, so we would love any feedback, um, around what was particularly useful in this session, um, what you would like to change, or what would you have liked more from us, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, we like to recess at nine o'clock. If you want to hang around for a few minutes, I'm sure some of us have numerous comments for you.
You guys don't have curfews, do you?
Or, uh. Or your office in Ann Arbor, uh, I go to Ann Arbor at least once a week, so.
Do you?
Yes.
Uh, we are on State Street, um, it's called Grand Sustainability Institute, we have a little cube there, um, little eagle cubes.
Right on State Street, right downtown?
Right downtown, yeah.
Right above the Starbucks, it's a U of M building, it's a U of M Research Institute, we have some cubes.
Give me that information before you leave, please.
Sweet.
Sorry.
Would you give me that information before you leave, please? Because I will not be able to attend the third session.
Yeah, he's gonna be gone.
I'm gonna be gone on vacation.
Totally.
He's going to Alaska.
Wow, do you have like a note pad that I could, oh, yeah, sorry.
Do we have any comments from any of the commissioners?
Um, I don't know how we got chosen, but I.
On this or on any?
On anything you want to make a comment about.
I really enjoyed this, this is unbelievably educational.
Did you guys, wait, did you guys adjourn, what's going on?
We're recess.
Not formally, no.
Okay.
We have a recess.
We're just gonna take a recess of commissioner comments, is that okay?
Wait, what are?
Well, not a recess.
What are, yeah, what are we doing, we have to get the minutes.
We're gonna have a few minutes of commissioner comments, and then we're gonna recess.
Okay, and then we're gonna adjourn.
Never gonna adjourn, I said recess or adjourn.
Okay.
He scared Miles, he's very reg.
Well, we just, we gotta get the minutes right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my mistake, my mistake.
But Jason's not here to pick them apart, so he's gonna have to watch a video.
He'll watch the video.
Yeah, he will.
I'm sure he will, you had some comments, right?
Um, I really, really enjoyed the program, I, I really liked what you guys did, it was amazing. I'd like to see, you know, more of the data that we talked about.
So, Ying Chen was planning on, I don't know, that's correct, are you still planning on kind of giving them a final liberal, like a?
Can you say this at the mic? Sorry.
So sorry.
Everybody's gonna yell at us for you not being up there, so.
So are you planning on giving a like, final deliverable of like the data, more of the data essentially?
Yeah, I was planning on, um, handing off all the maps I showed in the session as them, made them, made them into like a formal maps to you guys, and I can also share the data, all the data I used, so you can see the model yourself.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, work with it, play with it.
We like G I S.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, I'm getting the address to our offer.
Uh, in terms of trustee update, there's nothing, because we didn't, we canceled our meeting. Uh, we do have a meeting Monday, the focus of the meeting is the Senior Services Advisory Board. Uh, so if you have any interest in that, you're welcome to attend. Uh, but I did want to point out that there is also the May sixth meeting is focused on the Park Lake Trail, which I do feel probably has some connections to the Planning Commission for the future. So it may be interesting to comment here, the public comment that's gonna be expressed there. I feel that there are strong opinions on both sides of the issues, and I think the township's gonna be caught in between, or the Board of Trustees maybe are gonna be in the middle of that, so it might be interesting from a planning perspective to hear, um, all sides, hear what's presented, I guess that's what I'd say.
You guys are all set, thanks. Yeah.
You guys, day fourteen.
You buy the beer sometime, we'll talk.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, good night.
Bye-bye.
And I wanted to ask if Miles and his, his update could address Webster Road? I've been getting a lot of questions about that and where it actually stands, I feel like the information I have felt uncommittal one way or the other.
We're gonna skip the report from Claire, we'll just answer your question real quick. Um, the, we have asked the Road Commission to draft up a public comment for us to share out, because we also aren't firmed up on the timeline, but largely speaking sidewalks this year, uh, the Kessler portion of the project this year, roads next year.
So that's the hill and dip?
The hill and dip this year.
Do you know when that's starting?
No, we don't know that yet, that's what the Road Commission needs to get us a statement on. They're, we haven't got their statement yet, because they're not sure yet.
Yeah, that's what I had heard from Mark, was that they were gonna push it to twenty twenty-five.
The, the, the mill and fill of. Yeah, Webster, yep.
How do you do a dip and a hill without a mill and a fill?
They will, they will put down the wear course.
Okay.
So it'll be drivable, basically, it'll be, you've driven on roads like this before, it feels a little bumpy, it's a wear course, they haven't striped the road yet, it's common.
Okay, we just have to make it through till next year.
They'll just make it through for a winter, and in the meanwhile, you know, our concern is Webster Road's in pretty rough shape, we need some patching to do, they did come in and do some white patching, they'll do some heavier patching.
Yeah, that stretch, that stretch from Clark to here is unbelievable.
I know. It's, we're not happy that it got dragged out you there, but there's extending circumstances.
Yeah, I understand that, but yeah, just to get a definitive answer is helpful.
We understand there's confusion, and we're trying, we're, we, it's administration's job to pump out information to the community, they're on it.
Okay.
Mark, did you have anything?
No, I, again, this session, again, the two that we've had, and I'm looking forward to the third. When you look at what happened over at Eagle Township, you know, uh, versus us, we've got one little piece, but it's actually gonna be DeWitt that will drive it, and we need to be looking forward to that and have our ducks in a row.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, if that ever comes to fruition, we may be having some, maybe a joint session with DeWitt Planning or something.
But isn't DeWitt planning the county?
No, they do their own.
Okay.
They have their own planning.
I think DeWitt Township.
They'll get into it more next time, but that's kind of the interesting thing about this, is with these multi municipality, you know, you're working with other municipalities to make sure their zoning aligns.
But ultimately, it comes down to the property owners, right? If the property owners have no interest.
Yeah, yeah, then it doesn't go.
Then it's a, a, a done deal, so what sense do we have that there even is interest? I mean, it's nice that, that people came tonight, but I was just curious, there sounds like there's a lot of money to be made.
Yeah, money talks.
Money does talk.
They might not want to come to a planning commission meeting, but somebody comes to you with a big check.
With a big check.
You know, I, since the seventies, when I worked in the factory, a lot of those guys lived up this way. Um, St. John's, you know, whatever it is, Bannister, uh, Maple Rapids, and they farmed too. They worked full-time at the factory, because they couldn't make enough money farming.
Yep.
And they've since, you know, gone out of business, and they were, you know, some of them maybe had five hundred acres, but most of them were.
Most farmers have some kind of side gig still, and look at Steve, County Treasurer, still farming.
County, I just saw him, uh, we were over in, uh, St. John's having lunch, Constance and I, and there was Steve coming walking right in.
Yep, yep, yep. I just have two things, uh, I think this whole program has got a lot of negatives once the people see the impact it's gonna have on their utility bill. It's gonna be significant.
I think they're being honest about that, though, too, they're saying like, yeah, this is gonna make your utility bill go up.
And the other thing is, we've got a lot of development that's coming on stream, and we really need to evaluate our TAP fees, because they haven't been evaluated for at least a decade, if not more than I'm aware of.
Your sewer tap-in fees?
The sewer tap-in fee, yes.
Weren't we gonna, we were gonna review that?
Yes, and I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, but I will not be chairing the next meeting, so. Mr. Cocky will be chairing the meeting, and I would like to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
I've done this many years ago, and I think you have some experience at it as well. So it's doable by this group, and then we can make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, okay?
Sounds like a plan, thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Anybody, those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone object?
No.
Thank you so much, thanks for your patience.
Kate, what do you want your, what do you want Chris to be labeled as? Is he like museum director, he's like president?
Vice president.
Vice president, perfect.
Kate Tausman.
Mr. Kate. I just like, that's how I know him, I was like, I can't, I can't be like trustees, vice president.